Okay, welcome folks to the City of Lowell zoning board of appeals. This is a public hearing. There's a lot of people here tonight, so we just ask for your cooperation. We have several matters on tonight, most of them continuances from the last hearing. If I could ask in advance for anybody who wishes to address this board, to please do so from the podium. We can only acknowledge the people who do address the board from the podium and to please sign your name and address at the podium. I believe there's a form there that you can use. As I said, there's several matters on that are continued from the last hearing. We're going to take the first one out of order because Clear Wireless has several, and they're first, but there's one second. So we'll take the second one first and then go down the agenda from there. The first one we're going to call is ZB 2009 43, a request for special permit and variances. The applicant is Barlow Signs, 732 Rogers Street. This project is in a regional retail district and the petitioner would like a special permit for the internal illumination and the electronic changeability for the alteration of an existing sign, as well as a variance to exceed the maximum sign size allowed according to section 6.3.2 and 6.3.4 of the zon ordinance. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tim Sullivan. I'm an employee of Barlow Signs. If I may approach, I have some additional photos.
Sure. Before you start, sir, maybe I can just read the two memorandums we got into the record, so get that over with first. I have a memorandum from Catherine Murphy, the zoning officer, 732 Rogers Street regarding the continuance. This is a request to add approximately 24 additional feet to an existing 48 square foot freestanding internally illuminated sign, bringing the total square footage to 72 square feet. The proposed addition is for an electronic changeable sign. This sign is in addition to the existing sign, and it's added into the existing base. The existing sign is already oversized, so a variance is required to add additional square footage, as well as a special permit for the illumination and changeability. This lot is not allowed to have two freestanding signs, as it does not have over 300 feet of street frontage per section 6.3.8. There's another memorandum from George Porakis, planning and development, dated November 9th, which is today. At the request of the applicant, the Department of Planning and Development met staff with the designer and seal person from Barlow Signs and the applicant on November 4th. We had a very good discussion about the proposed sign's technology and its impact on the neighborhood. Despite all the new information that was conveyed, the DPD indicated at this meeting that our position on this sign would not change. It was based upon the discussions held at the city council zoning subcommittee in previous meetings on the sign code. DPD does not feel that it would be appropriate to recommend the approval of a sign that does not meet current standards, is clearly against the position of DPD recommended, and the council subcommittee endorsed at the early discussions on the sign code. Thank you. That's all I have for memorandums or information, sir, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, my name's Tim Sullivan. I'm with Barlow Signs out of Hudson, New Hampshire. As a memo said, it was recommended at our last meeting that we sit down with the DPD and discuss some possible ways around making this proposal work. And as a memo said, it was a good meeting, and in fact, Barlow Signs is going to help the DPD with their changes to the ordinance that they're proposing and recommend some things, because we've done this with several other towns in the area. And I think it's commendable that Lowell is considering them. There's a lot of towns that just knee-jerk reaction says no, nothing, and it really hurts the businesses. And the fact that they're willing to look at them and figure out a way to make them work for everybody, I think is a good thing. We pointed out how other communities are dealing with them with regards to rate of change, size, animation, that type of thing. And I think unfortunately for us, the Saints Memorial Hospital, the Saints Hospital, put a board up, and it's kind of affected the way the community looks at this type of board. They've got a board that they're running fairly crazy out there, along with some of the other message centers that are in town. And we feel that the way is to not prevent them from being in town, but actually control how they're being used. With the original email from the DPD, there was some concerns with regards to the size of the sign, how the sign is changed, that there's no animation, the brightness, and that type of thing. And as I said at the last meeting, and I'll kind of touch on them again in this meeting, our sign, their recommendation was that the board is not greater than 50% of the overall size of the sign. The board we're proposing in this presentation is actually 30% or 33%. It's well below what their recommendation is. The board has no movement or animation, if you will. We're fully in compliance with that. We've found with these types of boards, it doesn't really work. The flashing and the blinking and the scrolling more or less defeats the purpose of the message. And our client is in compliance with that, that they're going to run this board as a static board. The message is going to come on, it's going to be on for 20 seconds, it's going to fade off. A new message is going to fade on, be on for another 20 seconds, and fade off. The recommendation from the DPD was a 20-second rate of change, and that's what we're fine with it. Even though the board has the capabilities to run video and do that type of thing, it's not the intention of this board for this type of application. It doesn't work, to be honest with you, to show videos on the side of a street. It just doesn't serve the purpose. They were also concerned with the brightness of this type of sign, and I know with that area of town, I know there's some concerns with the traffic and pedestrians crossing from the field to the McDonald's across the street. These signs typically dim 30% from, if a normal bright sign on a normal sunny day is running at 100% brightness, they dim down to about 30% at night. And depending on the ambient light and how much is around it, we typically dim them down even further, because being too bright at this type of sign just doesn't work. You can't read the message, it's ineffective. And they're equipped with photo cells on the sign, so even if you've got a thunderstorm rumbling through, and it gets dark during the daytime, the sign's automatically dimmed down. Or, you know, if it's a snowy day and it's dark, the unit's dimmed down in accordance with its surroundings. But again, we would typically run a sign at 30% as brightness, maybe even down to 25% depending on the ambient light. But that's something you kind of got to see and feel when the actual sign is out there. Basically, the only two concerns with the DPD that they have that we don't really agree with was the size of the board. They recommended 20 square feet, we're proposing 24 square feet. We were a little concerned at the 20-square-foot size. I know it's only four square feet, but if you're going to put a message up there and you're going to leave the message up for 20 seconds or so, you have to have a whole concise message up there that someone can read as they're passing by. You can get away with a smaller board if the board has ability to scroll through messages, and you can say two or three things in a matter of time. But the way we're using this board, it's going to be up there, and it's going to be one message, static, for 20 seconds, and then it'll fade off, and then there'll be another message. It doesn't make sense to go with a smaller board and have that scrolling effect. And their second concern was the full color of the unit. They were recommending red or amber or one-colored copy on a black background. They couldn't give us a concrete reason as to why that was their recommendation, and I don't think they really knew at this stage of the game why that's what they wanted to do. But with us, our feeling is the city doesn't dictate the colors of other signs in town, and I don't understand why this one is really dictated by the colors of it. If you look at the photos that I gave you on the last page, I believe, with the McDonald's sign, technically what we're doing isn't a whole lot different than their reader board with a full-colored image up there. Ours has the ability to change. They could have someone walk out there every 10 minutes and change that message, and it would still be a full-colored illuminated type of unit. Again, we've already stated that we also plan to volunteer this sign to the community and to be used as a community sees fit. And I understand that my clients had some discussion with the community with regards to how often they would like to be able to use the sign to advertise community events, and would also be willing to use it with regards to the stadium next door to advertise events that are going on in the stadium. And then we also talked earlier at the last meeting about using this sign as an amber alert message board, which will tie it into the statewide program, and give them the ability to put a full-colored image of a lost child or a full image up there to allow better visibility.
Do you have any objections for me passing some around to the audience while?
Oh, no. I've got some extras here. I've got some extras I could pass out.
Maybe that's an idea on each end, just to get the folks interested to look at it?
There was also some questions regarding the property's hardship. In today's economy, the auto dealerships are pretty much walking a tight rope. It's recorded that about 50% of the auto dealerships in the country are going out of business, which means if there's four auto dealerships on that road, that stretch of road, there is a chance that two out of those four could be out of business. We already kind of have a feeling that the Saturn dealership right next door will probably be one of the ones going out of business, considering they've ceased manufacturing that type of vehicle. And what my client's trying to do is just trying to compete with the other two large dealerships directly across the street from them.
Can I ask you a question, just to interrupt for one second? As you know, the standard that we use for the hardship isn't, you know, sometimes maybe it should be related to economic reasons, but it's not. It's related to the size and shape and the topography of the land, how it's distinguished from other properties around it. So I think that's what they're referring to, the hardship. Almost anybody can demonstrate a financial hardship these days. So I just want to point that out, that although that's something that we can empathize with, it's not really a standard that we can use to make our decision.
Understood. But the building itself does sit back on its lot. It's tucked behind that stadium if you're heading from the highway toward it. And if you're approaching from the other direction, it's sitting back behind the other building. So the building itself really doesn't offer much visibility, and with the sign size that's there now, you really can't see it. If you look in the photos that I presented, it's tough to see that sign really coming from any direction. Most of the other businesses in that area employ flags on their lamp, light posts, banners, that type of thing. And this property, they want to maintain a clean, concise look to it. They've taken down all the banners on the flagpoles or on the lamp posts. They basically just have a flag in the middle of the parking lot, and that's their intention, is to free the lot of clutter. And by freeing it, by putting up this one concise board, it allows them to not, you know, put specials up on the front of the building with banners and that type of thing. Basically, they're trying to attract, say, one out of every 50 cars that pass that place that may not understand that they do oil changes or offer snow tires or that type of thing, to potentially get some new customers in there that wouldn't necessarily be on that property until they know what they're available to do. It's important to have proper signage in that type of environment. With everything that's going on around there, the size is actually necessary to compete with the other signs that are adjacent to it on both sides of the street, and give motorists an adequate chance to identify the property and negotiate a safe turn into there, because I'm sure we all know that that's a very busy street, and the sooner motorists can identify the property, the better off it's going to be. I understand the board's concern with this type of sign, but we feel that with regulations, a client is allowed to have this type of sign, and he could have it and have it work effectively for both the community and his location, and that's what we're seeking tonight.
If you're, I know you said at the last meeting, and you said again tonight, that you're not planning on implementing the video messaging, so why request it? Is that just part of how the sign is manufactured, or?
We're not really requesting it.
Well, didn't you say that, you know, you're not going to use the picture board part of it?
No. When I say video animation, I'm saying the fact that, you know, you could have a camera on the street filming people and show it up on the board, almost like you would on your television set. These units have that capability, yes. Is that what it's going to be used for, no? Because a moving picture on this type of board doesn't work. Flashing, blinking, scrolling, that's not what they're going to use. And our recommendation is that if it were to be approved tonight, that the board would put that stipulation on it, that it's a single static message that's held for 20 seconds and then fades off, and then it's another single static message. Yes, it's a colored message, but it's static, it's not moving, it's not blinking, it's not scrolling, it's not doing anything.
Didn't we discuss at the last meeting that, you know, the direction that the city's going in as far as these signs are, to hold the messages longer? We're not talking about, you know, from 10 seconds to 20 seconds. At least my feeling was for, you know, several hours, half a day, or twice a day, or once a day, or something like that. I know you addressed that briefly at the last meeting, but.
Right, and we brought that up with the DPD, that was your concern. And their recommendation was that it almost defeats the purpose of this type of sign. They didn't feel that the 20 seconds was going to cause danger or cause problems. And our concern is if we do offer it to the town to, you know, advertise a fall festival, we're not able to get our message out there, because the town's message is going to be taking up half the day on the sign. Whereas if we have it scrolling through, then we'll be able to put messages like that intermixed with the actual messages that we're trying to get out.
So as far as the picture that goes up there, you're saying you wouldn't be using that, but the board does have that capability?
Correct.
So is there a board you can get without that, or is that how they're all coming now? That's what I don't understand.
That's pretty much how they're all coming. It's technology, it's the LED or LCD type of technology. It's almost like your TV in your living room, you could put up a digital picture from your camera, or you could put up a digital video from your camcorder. And what we're, our proposal is just to put up the static message from your camera.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
Okay, any discussion, Bill? Before we open up to a public hearing?
Just a couple of, I guess, questions for the petitioner. The sample pictures that you provided tonight, some of the other dealerships on that street, in your opinion, are any of those signs larger than what you currently have as the freestanding sign?
Oh, yes, they all are. All of them are.
And so tonight, you're not really suggesting that you're going to make any changes from the original proposal, even based on the meeting with the DPD?
Correct, correct. More so, if I may, because the DPD didn't really offer any input. They didn't really offer where we should take it. And I think a little bit has to do with the fact that they're kind of in the middle of developing the ordinance right now and writing it. And one of our recommendations to them was that maybe we should get a sign up in town that runs the way it should run. A sign that the town can go out and view and say, this is the way these signs should look, this is the way they should act. And that's kind of where we were heading with this. They asked us for some recommendations of other signs in other towns to go look at. We gave them a couple up in Nashua that I personally was familiar with, but I've yet to hear if they actually went and looked at any other signs. And again, that's further down the road for them, because that's where they're going to be heading, is to developing this ordinance.
So I guess based on, again, the communication we received from DPD, it seems like you're willing, or you are meeting, most of the requirements that they've talked about. Obviously, the square footage is an issue. Now, when they talk about violation of, okay, size and color, the color you talked about also, you're not sure. Are you in agreement with the color or not?
No, I'm not. I mean, they're saying it's supposed to be a single color on a black background.
Yep.
Our concern is you don't put those restrictions on any other signs in town. If I was just putting up a regular signboard under there, I'd be able to do whatever colors I chose. So that was our concern with that.
And your comment was, you really, in your opinion, they didn't have any idea why they were asking that?
No, no.
Now, you're only showing every 20 seconds pictures of vehicles. Is that, will there be anything about services, anything like that?
Yes, yes. I mean, we just did the photos on, or the superimposed boards on our photos was more or less just to show the capabilities of the signs. Obviously, if there's going to be a special on oil changes, it doesn't really make sense to show, you know, a drop of oil. It'd be make more sense just to show, you know, copy itself that says oil changes. So the board will have the ability to go both ways.
Now, you also mentioned about other locations on the street with banners. So there's currently banners being displayed by other dealerships?
Sure, if you look, where was it? On the third page, on the left-hand column, at the bottom, I mean, that shows the Pontiac GMC sign. It shows banners all down there, their light posts, and you can see the size of our proposed sign to the right of that in relationship to everything that's going on on that side of the street. It's tough to compete with that much stuff going on.
Well, I only ask because that's what's in one of the sentences here. You know, we encourage the applicant to work with DPD in an overall plan for signage and landscaping that would reduce the need for banners and other visual clutter. Are you doing landscaping also?
Well, with respect to this property, I mean, I think it's landscaped pretty well compared to everything else on that stretch, and they maintain the property. I mean, the building itself is clean. You know, it's a good-looking property, and it's just sits back, and it's important to get visibility to it.
Thank you. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Jack, anything?
For you, Mr. Chairman. I, comment first would be, I don't think you did yourself, or certainly your client, much of a service by referring to the messages on the Saints Memorial sign as crazy messages. This board felt as though that both of the hospitals here in this community do an outstanding public service, aside from the fact of they're probably the two single largest employers in the immediate area. So to refer to the messages on the board as crazy messages, I'd be very candid with that, I took personal offense to it. Comment from Planning and Development. To date, the ZBA has only granted one application for such a sign, and this was at Saints Memorial Hospital, a location where ZBA members have stated that the approval was based upon the need to provide more visibility to a significant nonprofit institution in the community. And I think that that is specifically how I feel. The other problem that I think you need to understand, for the board members and certainly for the community that we represent, when is enough enough? And that's the juncture that we face. We're at that point where technology is terrific. It's made life a great deal easier for us, but obviously there are certain inconveniences, and as the city council and the subcommittee, with their due diligence and their recommendation, along with planning and development, in spite of your efforts, I'm not sure I'm able to support this based on that. I certainly understand. I travel Route 38 quite a bit. I know the signs that's there. But at some particular point, that's an issue that each board member here, we're going to have to deal with, is these new signs and technology, which is specifically why Planning and Development are coming up with new statutes and guidelines for us. It's going to become more difficult. I'm sorry that if you came at this time, but those are my sentiments. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Vezza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do echo Mr. Knott's concern, same concern I raised at the last meeting, that is, the size of the sign, and I can support that, that and also the brightness of it, along with the facts that the static message is changing. Now, the last time, you're speaking of changing every 15 minute, 15 second now, 20 second, it's not enough, because, you know, 20 second, you park on a stoplight, right there, you can see that message change a couple of times already, and that's really distracting to the people who are driving, the traffic and whatnot. The size of the sign is exceeding what required. I understand that the business need to compete with other in the area, but doing this way is not doing any service to the neighborhood in term of the sign. You know, now you're asking for exceeding the amount, and next thing you're going to see is that your next-door business partner or neighbor is going to come and do the same thing. At some point, Mr. Knott is correct, that is, we need to put our foot down and say it's enough. And this may be one of those times that we need to start doing so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Vezza.
May I address those comments?
Sure. Why don't we hear from the board, and then if you could just note down what they are, and we'll do it all at once?
Sure.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. My fellow board members do make some good points, but in my opinion, the petitioner has done his due diligence. I mean, he's tried to reach out and unfortunately received the correspondence in the final hour here that we just received tonight, and that they are not in support of this. And as Mr. Noon stated, I mean, you're a business looking to do the right thing and improve your business in a difficult economy, and we should always be here to support that. But a sign, reader board of this magnitude, I mean, if your neighbor, a competition directly across the street, does the same thing or wants to do a larger, it might be difficult to say no. So, I mean, DPD does have a few concerns. I think you come close, meeting the criteria, and I think middle ground can be reached. I mean, without a doubt, this sign Chrysler and Jeep is going to be the beneficiary, but the community can also be a beneficiary. You're talking amber alerts, community advertising, whether it be the low-high football game, Winter Fest, Lowell Folk Festival, discussion we had two weeks ago, you're willing to participate in all of that. I think you, I don't know if you mentioned that to Planning and Development, but they might find that interesting. I know I do, I'm very involved in all of them, and it's a gateway to the city. So, you know, I think everybody can be a beneficiary of something like this. I'm not saying we need loud colors or animation or anything like that, but I think you may come close to a middle ground here, and I think it can be reached. So I don't want to see this, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to see the board vote hastily on this, and the petition end up with nothing. I don't know if we can continue this, or have maybe give the petitioner option to withdraw to review it again with DPD. to review it again with DPD, maybe cut down the sign as the size. I mean, you're proposing 24 square feet, they recommend 20. So we're not worlds apart here. So, I mean, the timing of this doesn't bode well for you because we're in the process of revamping the city's sign codes, which are nearly 20 years old, and the technology has come miles. So, you know, so I'd like to see something done, not quite to the extent of what you have here, but I think, again, an agreement can be reached. So I don't want to see this forward vote hastily this evening, because I think the community and your business can be a beneficiary on this. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, that vote is, you know, entirely up to the petitioner because he's here looking for the vote. So unless he tells us otherwise, you know, we go forward with that. And still, I think the biggest problem I have is I don't think that we can just ignore the requirements for variance. I don't think that you've demonstrated that. I don't think you can, based on what I've seen on the application. So I think that, in my mind anyway, and I'm just one vote, but I think that that's your biggest hurdle. I don't see that you can demonstrate a variance. I understand the economic impact that it has, or could have, on your client, and I completely empathize with that, but it's not something we can really consider in voting for that. But that's just my position. I think Mr. Belanger gave some good suggestion to continue to work with DPD. You did come at a time, just by chance, that they're three-quarters of the way through finalizing this, and to allow something of this magnitude at this point would probably, you know, throw things backwards rather than forward, and kind of throw us upside down as to what criteria we're using. So I think maybe what Corey suggested is maybe better off with half a loaf than none, and I don't know what that is. I still think you have an issue with the standard for variance. But, you know, that's going to be up to you later, but we'll see what Rick has to say, and then we'll hear from the public.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I kind of agree with Mr. Belanger. I'd hate to see you lose this petition over a few things, and the variance is a hard standard to meet. But working with DPD, you've met most of their five points. And again, as everybody stated, we're in the midst of a change. So I would be willing to let the petitioner go back and work with the DPD if that's what he felt, and see if he can come back and, you know, try to meet the variance standard. I know that sign went for a variance or special permit prior because of the size already.
Correct. Correct.
So through you, Mr. Commissioner. When was that? Do you remember when that was given, Bob? Was that way back?
No, I don't recall, but it's my understanding through the petitioner that the sign they actually put up was less than the size that was actually granted. Is that true?
Correct. Correct. In 2000, the site received a variance for 150 square feet. And as I stated that in the last meeting, but maybe I should have reestablished it in this meeting. And what we're proposing is a total square footage of 74 square feet, so it's still well below what that original variance was for. And what happened was about the time of that variance, Chrysler Jeep changed their sign program to be this sign, and they actually sent the wrong sign to the property, and they didn't get the full-size sign that they were supposed to put up there, because obviously it's not a very competing sign with what's going on around it. So at that time, instead of going further without a sign, they chose to install the slightly smaller sign than what they actually had the variance for.
So, Mr. Commissioner, is he entitled to that larger sign still today, if he wanted to? Or is it an exercise?
I believe he is, but the part of the issue here is, he was granted that variance for that size of sign, but that didn't include the reader type board that he's proposing tonight.
Correct. But he could, could he come in tomorrow and get a sign 150 square feet, or whatever they got the variance for, and not have a problem?
I'd have to check on that, but I believe he could.
Okay.
But that, again, that would not include...
The reader board, correct. I understand that. So he could put a massive sign out there, 150 square feet, double what he has there now. You know, again, I'm in line with Mr. Belanger. I'd like to see you work with the city and work this out, so it could be a win for both the city and the business, but also work within the community for the sign size. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Rick. So do you want to address anything before I open up to the public?
Sure, just a couple of points. One concern was the rate of change at 20 seconds. And the comment was that if you're sitting at a light, you possibly could see it cycle through three changes, if you will. If you're sitting at the light, then the rate of change isn't the issue. The concern is, as you're driving down the road, you have the rate of change, it distracts your eyes, and you swerve off the side of the road or something. But if you're physically stopped at the light, that, to me, would seem the ideal time to change the sign, because the vehicles are stopped and there's no movement. And with respect to the sign size, as was pointed out, we were entitled to a 150-square-foot sign, and if we were, in fact, putting up just a sign, not the EMC, then the hardships for that size sign wouldn't really come into play, because, again, we've already received the variance. Then we're just dealing with a special permit to have the illumination of the message center. Basically, it's a twofold thing. It's the variance for the sign size, and it's the special permit for the internal illumination. That's what the application is for. So that was my concern with that. If we've already been, we had that size sign, and according to this gentleman here, we were allowed to maintain that size sign, or so we thought, then the task of proving the hardship should already be involved in that last variance. Obviously, there was already a hardship because that variance was granted. So that's my two real concerns.
Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. So anybody here wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? Mr. Goldman?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass. I wish to speak in opposition to this, excuse me, at this time, based on the DPD memo that was sent to you. Also, the fact that the city is three-quarters of the way through the new ordinance, and my suggestion would be to continue this until probably the second meeting in January, because I think that by the end of the year, it will be done, and so that they can continuously to meet with the DPD staff and come up with a suitable sign. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition to this petition? Welcome, ma'am.
Hi, Elizabeth Baldwin, 45 By Street. I just have a couple...
What was the address, ma'am?
45 By Street. I just have a couple of points to make about some of the signs that are in my neighborhood. Saints Memorial, while worthy institution, that sign is too bright by about half. It's very distracting while you're driving down the road. And also, we have just a plain red billboard that changes near my house, and frequently they put up words like, "Stop." And that on a road is, it's almost like a road sign. It takes you back for a moment. And I just would like people to consider that. When these signs go up, they're so much brighter than an average painted billboard, that it becomes the only thing you see as you're driving. And I just want that taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. And what is the wish of the board?
We will take the board's recommendation and seek a continuance again this evening, and try to sit down with the DPD and see if we can reach a little bit better agreement. Hopefully, they've hashed out some of their thoughts, and with Barlow Signs working with them, hopefully, the two of us can kind of, you know, help each other and let them know what's worked with other towns and other communities in New England and sort out some of the issues.
I think that's probably a good idea.
I definitely support that, Mr. Chairman.
Stephanie, when is the, what are you looking, I mean, how much time do you think, just to give you a heads up, that they're very busy? I mean, we have a hard time communicating sometimes, so they're just swamped. It's not their fault, but they're just swamped. So give yourself, you know, enough time to do your due diligence.
Yeah, let's push it off to after the first of the year.
Okay. So what is the first meeting in Jan... Okay.
2010. We only have till September 2009 now, 2018.
Okay. So we can, we can put it, we can state that it's the first meeting of the year, don't know the date of that, we don't have that date, Stephanie, anywhere, and, you know, say on the record that it's the first meeting of the year. You don't have to re-advertise anyway.
Correct.
It will be in our minutes that, you know, we expect you to be there that meeting, and I'll put a special note that the, if the continuance is approved, that Stephanie, contact Kim at ZBA, and they let you know right when the first meeting is. I'm sure they have the schedule somewhere by now, so they can probably call you tomorrow and let you know that. We just don't know when it is. I apologize for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Do we have any idea when DPD is going to be done with the new regulations?
Good point. I'm not sure. They are meeting, just for anybody's information. We are meeting with them at the end of the next regularly scheduled meeting, I believe, so they, as part of the public hearing. So that is when, Stephanie?
[inaudible].
So at the end of that meeting, just before Thanksgiving, they, George Porakis and, I believe, Diane Trad will be in here, so maybe, you know, your input at that meeting might help as well.
And they'll be offering, that's what the meeting is about there?
That's what it's about. At the end of the meeting, so you don't have to be here through the whole meeting unless you have something on the agenda.
Right.
But right now, that's, now, that changes, in case we ended up with four more things on for that night, that might change. But as of now, my last discussion with Mr. Porakis is that they are planning on meeting with us again and telling us, you know, we've given them recommendations, I think they've talked to the City Council and the Planning Board, and they're going to kind of work toward finalizing it, so that might be a good meeting to attend and give your input.
Great. Yes, thanks. Thanks for that information.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Joe.
Point, I guess, legal perspective here, and I would first ask the Commissioner, he has already submitted his petition. If this is instituted immediately following year, is he subject to those new guidelines?
I'm not sure I follow. Which guidelines are you...
Well, we're waiting on a rewriting of the signage. If there are significant changes that would be applicable to a petition like his, would they affect him, or would they not affect him, because he's already submitted the petition?
They could. Well, I think as a practical matter, whether they do or they don't, whether he's held to the standard right now, or what's going to be adopted, as a practical point, you know, we decide as a board, so we can use whatever, you know, standards that we always use when we approve or deny projects. So I don't think it's going to make a whole lot of difference as to which ordinance is in effect at the time. But it's a good point. I think it's, you know, you should be aware of what that is. And, you know, I'm not sure whether it will be approved by that time. I think there's, you know, if it has to go through the City Council or something, I'm not sure exactly the process, but it may take a little longer than that.
Correct. But if you've already met with the DPD, and you've got their guidelines, and you pretty much agree with what their guidelines are, and as long as we fall within their guidelines, then I think...
Yeah, that's what I mean, as a practical matter, it's not going to...
...we'll be headed to a decision.
Right. We're hoping that this, the change in the sign ordinance is going to assist everybody, not just us. It's very difficult when these signs come before this board, very difficult, because we were presented with ideas and pitches that we don't know what they're going to look like when they get up. And the woman made a good point on Pine Street. I mean, you get, that's something I guarantee you that nobody, I don't think we were on this board, a lot of us weren't, that would imagine that's what would be the final product. You know, I don't see, still, I don't see a huge problem with some other signs that were approved, but I do see some problems with signs that we approved that I actually see out in the field, saying, oh, now I know what everybody's talking about. So this is really going to help everybody, you as, you know, the sign company, the businesses and us as the board. So hopefully, it's everybody working together, so I think your input at that meeting would be valuable.
Okay. Great.
All right? So I need a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to continue the first scheduled hearing in January of 2010.
Second it.
Okay. Roll call, Stephanie?
Mr. Bailey?
Continue.
Mr. Belanger?
Continue.
Continue to the first meeting of January 2010.
Continue to the first week of January 2010.
Continue.
So you've been unanimously continued. There'll be no further requirement to advertise anything. Anybody wishing to address the board or give any input at all on this petition is welcome to show up the first meeting in January. We don't know when that is. But Stephanie, could you please make a note to Kim to notify the applicant as soon as she knows when that is, so he can schedule that in?
Great.
Okay. Thank you, sir. See you then. Bye-bye. Okay. The next item on the agenda, we're going to start from the beginning, is ZB 2009, number 41. The applicant is looking for a special permit for telecommunications. It's Clear Wireless LLC. Property address is 1221 Westford Street. This is an office park zoning. Petition for the installation of five microwave dishes and the replacement of three existing panel antennas at an existing telecommunications facility for Clear Wireless, according to Section 7.6 of the zoning code. And welcome, sir. I'm not sure if this is one of the ones that we weren't sure about the notice, but we did confirm that all the notices were properly made, and everybody who was notified, we have evidence that they were notified. Why there weren't people there, I'm not sure, but you don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So where did we leave off?
This was a continuance. The property owners were not here last...
Oh, sure, sure. So we never even actually addressed this one?
We did not.
Okay.
My name's John Marcus, agent on behalf of Clear Wireless. As we discussed in the last hearing, a huge build out here in the New England market on the city Lowell. Partnered with Sprint, in this case, is a good example of that. This is one where there's existing lattice tower. Sprint and Nextel are currently on it. Clear Wireless is looking to modify the Sprint-Nextel array to include five microwave dishes on that array at 75 feet, the height of those going up to about 78 feet. We would replace three of the existing antennas with similar-looking antennas as well. The equipment cabinet will be inside the Nextel shelter. At the base of it, it'll include one equipment cabinet that you can't see from the street. It's an Office Park District pursuant to Section 7.6. It's a special permit for a telecommunications facility for modification of that. So that's pretty much where it is.
Now, what is currently at that site?
Currently, there's an 80-foot lattice tower. AT&amp;T is there. Sprint is there, Nextel is there, and I'm not sure exactly who else, but there's a number of other wireless carriers there.
Do you anticipate there to be any significant visual impact to what it is right now, to what you're proposing?
No, I do not. We're not increasing the tower. They're two-foot dishes. The antennas that are up there can be up to six feet tall. We're proposing to install five of them and replace one of each sector as well. I do not see a difference in the visual impact.
Now, can you explain just, and you don't have to do it for everyone, but maybe if you give us, there's a lot of folks here, my guess is that most of them are here for at least one or two of the other petitions. So what is the standard that you use for approvals for this as far as telecommunications go? You check out to make sure that there's no other place, but I think at your last meeting, you have no coverage in this area at all. So your standard is, you know, do you have other coverage? Can you latch on to something else? And here, there's nothing, because at this point, you don't have any coverage.
Correct.
That's, I did a little research on trying to figure out, you know, what authority we have to either approve or deny this, and my guess is, you know, it's somewhat limited based on what you're proposing. So can you give us a rundown of how you normally present these...
Sure. Well, my job as a site acquisition consultant is to go out, we're given searchings. You go out in that search ring, you determine where is the most feasible location to put our antennas, to put our equipment that's not detrimental to the neighborhood and anything like that, putting a tower in the middle somewhere. In this case, we're using existing tower, existing equipment, so we don't need any more ground space. It's sort of the perfect example of how to use an existing facility to get the coverage we need in the area. In other places, you know, we use steeples, we use everything we possibly can before we actually go to an actual tower to get our, fulfill, you know, our radio frequency tower to, uh, to get our, fulfill, you know, our radio frequency, uh, coverage objectives.
Okay, and, and in this case, it is an existing tower that's there?
Correct.
So, as far as it's, you know, any detrimental impact to the surrounding area, it's basically nothing, because it won't change much from what it is?
Correct.
Okay. All right, uh, Bill, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Jack, anything?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Vesna?
Moser.
Corey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to reiterate a few, uh, statements made now. So, you're saying you're not adding? I thought the original plan had an addition of 10 feet to the tower, no? So, we're not adding on to the tower?
That, that's, uh, that's T-Mobile, uh, who's doing that. Uh, that's, uh, that's not us, no.
Okay, all right. All right, so you're gonna keep, you know, and the floor space is fine too? You're not, you're not adding on there too?
Nope.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And Rick, anything?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody here wishes to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Galan. I represent the owner, CNSH Realty Trust of the property. We've seen the plans for the first time tonight, but I've spoken with Clear Wireless. We're satisfied with the terms of the plan. They do have existing coverage on the tower. They're just expanding their existing, uh, coverage to update for technology with, with some new discs on the tower and putting their technology within the existing location. We have no difficulty with that whatsoever, so we support the plan.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? In hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition to this petition, in opposition? And hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Any comment or further discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I guess...
Go ahead, Bill.
I guess, based on the gentleman's comment, does current, you currently have equipment on there?
Sprint does. Sprint and Nextel do.
Not Clear Wireless?
Correct.
Okay, I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second it.
Roll call, Stephanie?
Mr. Bailey?
Approve.
Mr. Malanto?
Approve.
Mr. Geary?
Approve.
Approve.
Approve. And so, you've been unanimously approved. I just need you to sign, uh, does anybody have one of the plans? Just sign a copy of, uh, the application and hand it to Stephanie? And so long as you do that before the end of the meeting, sir, is fine. It's...
Sure.
Okay, uh, the next petition is ZB 2009, number 44. Special permit telecommunications. Again, the applicant is Clear Wireless. The property address is 525 Pawtucket Boulevard. Uh, this is a petition for the installation of telecommunications panels, three antennas, two dish panels and related equipment inside the storage room at a penthouse level for Clear Wireless according to section 7.6 of the zoning code. Welcome, sir.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name is Andrew Thompson with Centerline Communications here in representation of Clear Wireless, US LLC. Uh, I believe the big point of contention from our last meeting was just to confirm that the abutters of the, the abutters of the property were properly notified, and I do believe that that, uh, has been clarified and taken care of.
Okay. And again, that, I think this was one of the ones with the notice that was...
Yes, the notice to the abutters, I think, was the big concern in this particular case, and I do believe that has been clarified.
Okay. And I, I think that was the only remaining issue, right? Maybe you explained, do you wanna, in, in case anybody's here for this petition, I have no idea whether they are or not, but, uh, there are some folk. Who's here wishing to speak in favor or against? Either way, just...
No, I'm against.
Okay, anybody here who's, has an interest in this petition, just please, for a second, just raise your hand? Okay, so there are some folks here, so rather, I know, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to repeat yourself from the last meeting.
Hmm.
Uh, they weren't here, just so they have an idea of what's going on.
Okay, uh, so, as I said, I represent Clear Wireless, uh, LLC. Clear Wire, what they, what they are currently in the process of launching is the first-ever nationwide 4G, uh, mobile internet, mobile wireless network. Uh, and what we're looking to do at this particular site is, uh, very similar as to what T-Mobile has done at the site, is install, uh, two stealth, uh, canisters, as well as install one panel antenna facade mounted to the side of the building. Uh, we're looking to install three panel antennas, as well as two backhaul dishes to be placed inside of these stealth canisters. Uh, and also, one of the dishes will be placed on the, uh, side of the building that I guess is on the opposite side from Pawtucket Boulevard, so what would be the back of the building as you're driving along. Uh, and then, again, what we're looking to do, uh, at this particular location, there currently is no coverage from, for Clear Wire, and obviously, this site will provide, uh, coverage in what is considered to be a significant coverage gap in our service.
And you've looked at alternative locations?
We have looked at alternative locations, yes.
And there's nothing that's feasible, is that what...
Uh, the original, the actually, the original candidate that we looked at, uh, similar to, um, what my colleague presented before, is Clear Wire does have a relationship with Sprint. So, we did obviously look at sites where they were currently installed. Uh, the actual address of the building, I'm not 100% sure what it is, but it's the next building down, the Saab Building.
Oh, sure, yep.
And, uh, currently Sprint is installed in there, inside a stealth box, and there's no room inside that box for our actual installation. So, that site was exhausted, because physically we could not fit our equipment at that location.
Okay, how about the MACOM building, which is only, uh, a few yards up the street, on the, on the same side? It's a rather large building, I might add.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not particularly familiar with that building. I know from being on the roof of the building that it's the Saab Building and then a rather large, open parcel of land. From there, would it be...
I think he's talking further down beyond the bowling alley, going towards Tingsborough. There's MACOM plant on the same side of the road.
I believe, I don't know if you have an approximate, but I believe, I think that would actually fall outside of the search ring of what we're actually trying to cover.
Yeah, I think it's about a half a mile down.
Yeah, then that, that wouldn't serve the same coverage objective, based on the footprint that these sites actually provide.
Right. And the difference between, if I picked up from what you told me last time, what I've been able to find out, the coverage that you have is not like when you put up a regular cell tower where the coverage can be, you know, go quite a while. This, you have very limited for each area, right? It only covers...
So, as we, as we testified, uh, in the last hearing, Clear Wire is licensed to operate by the FCC in a specific frequency, and the nature of that frequency that they are required to operate in actually, uh, provides a much smaller footprint than what you would see from your tip, your typical, uh, cellphone or wireless carrier such as AT&amp;T, Verizon, and that's just, uh, the nature of the frequency, again, that we're allowed to operate in.
Okay. All right. Bill, anything?
No questions right now.
And Jack?
Just so I'm clear, according to the memo from, um, Planning and Development, uh, it doesn't require a variance for, uh, the height. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. Knox, I think that's for the church site that will be next.
The church tower, we're on the yellow one?
Yes.
Okay, I got the wrong one in front of me? Okay. Uh, this particular, do we have, have we designated access times on this location?
Uh, we do have, uh, a representative from Princeton Grandview here who can speak to access as well. Uh, in, in general, for emergency purposes, uh, access is required to be 24/7 for the carrier. However, uh, as an, an operating business, we generally operate under the hours of nine to five, Monday through Friday. Uh, outside of an emergency, you wouldn't see a visit to the site outside of those normal business hours.
I'm, I'm familiar with the main entrance of the building. Is it a card-access building? I mean, where he would go, would he, uh, externally, go up the side of the building? Does he have to enter the main portion of the building?
Key.
Key?
The main entrance to the building is a keyed entrance, yes.
So, the manager of the building would be notified, he would arrive with a key? Is that what would happen?
As a leasee, they, they would have keys to the building and keys to their, uh, to their storage area or their utility closet up on the, on the roof level.
Okay. That was a concern with the prior installation that, uh, some of the residents and tenants had. They wanted to know about, uh, the accessibility, uh, who was gonna be coming on, in and out of the building and what times they would be coming in and out of the building.
Sure.
And I think, uh, as we hear from some of the residents, I think that's, those are gonna be their concerns. So, I think that's something that needs to be addressed specifically for them.
Well, we've, we've tried to mirror the same access requirements that we currently have for T-Mobile, which is up on the roof, um, at this point.
I, um, I, I don't think you were here for the prior petitioners for the installation, so that's why I think, uh, they needed to hear it.
Okay.
Uh, from your lips to this.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vesna?
Thank you, sir. Um, so, sir, you said that, uh, the people who come to do service or, um, how often they come to do the service?
Uh, generally, once the site is installed and up and running, uh, it's one at a maximum two times per month. But, over the course of a year, it will average out to approximately one, one visit per month by a licensed technician.
So, every time they come, uh, they would, um, alert the, uh, building managers and, or, and/or they have the key to it, but they have to meet with the building manager first? Is that correct?
We, we do have a contact within, uh, within the actual condo, uh, I guess, a, a building manager, Silas, I believe is our contact. And, uh, and again, I think, as a lessie, we do, we would have the, I guess, right to, to enter the building during, during normal business hours, uh, which would be nine to five.
Are they, are they being escorted by the building managers, uh, to go to, uh, the roof to provide, uh, do the service up there? Or, they just go on their own? We require that during the due diligence period, right here, uh, until the, the facility is built. During the construction, they would need to notify us and, and have a representative of, of our company with them. Once they're built and the lease is executed and it is up and running, they would have their own access to the building. Again, this, this equipment's gonna be at the, the penthouse up, up on the roof, is that correct? That is correct. Right below the roof, there is a storage level or area where they have a, a room, a utility room. Um, there's no apartments on that floor. It's just, uh, utility access and storage on the upper level where they have a, a small 10-by-10 space leased.
Thank you. Sir, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My, my name is Kurt Schillington. I represent, uh, Princeton Grandview LLC, 1115 Westford Street in Lowell.
Thank you.
Okay. Kurt, one more, one more question while you're there, so...
Sure.
I mean, if they're the leasee, they're gonna have a key card. What's to stop them from going in, in case of an emergency now? I'm sure it's not gonna be an everyday occurrence at, at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. What's to stop them? I mean, if there's an emergency, they're gonna need to get in there, am I right?
Agreed. I mean, I, I don't expect them to be jackhammering through the floor.
Certainly not.
But, I mean, if, if their equipment fails and they need to reset a circuit breaker or, or if there's a lightning strike, or whatever the circumstances may be, um, they will need access to their equipment.
Okay, well, Mr. Chairman, after we hear from the residents, I will comment, uh, further. Thank you very much.
And Rick, anything?
Uh, no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? In favor of this petition, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed? Anybody here wish to speak in opposition? In opposition, just go one at a time, we'll get to everybody. Ma'am, just please state your name and address for the record before you address the board. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Danielle Aguenori. I'm one of the resident owners at Grandview, and I have, uh, some pictures and a signed document.
Okay, and can you just sign in, please, ma'am?
Certainly.
And what is it you're giving us, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
What is it you're giving us? Did you give a copy of this to the petitioner? Yeah, I'd give a, they're entitled to a copy.
As you know, we always show up. And, uh, tonight is no exception. I think we have 10 or 15 people. We just found out about this meeting today. However, what we are asking for is a continuance. Uh, we currently already have a cell tower on 527, and I think it is the same company, Clear Wireless. Is that not correct? So, it's a different mobile company?
Yeah, I believe it's different. If this, if you're referring to the last...
527, right.
Right, then the last time, just, just, if, if my memory's correct, the last time, when this building before was fully occupied, they had applied for telecommunications application came in for basically the same thing, where they're asking to attach to. We denied that petition. It was sent to court and the court remanded it back to this board for approval.
That was before we were living in there, right?
Right, but just to let you know that that's, you know, we heard from all the owners at that time, and...
Well, actually, if you wanna look at the, uh, pictures, you will see that as part of that agreement, when you granted them the cell towers, they were not supposed to attach anything to the facade of the building, and that goes against the master deed. And as you see there, they have attached something to the side of the building. And as this gentleman stated, he, there are plans to attach two or three things to the facade or the side of the building.
Well, um, you know what, maybe it's better if, if you address them one at a time in this case, because I'm a little bit confused myself right now. So, why don't we, why don't, why don't, is that your first issue? Because I can have the applicant address it.
That is the first issue, and if you notice, they did attach, the last company did attach, even though you had told them not to, and it was against the master deed. And you'll see it circled and stated.
No, I do. Are you aware of this at all, Mr. Kamasha?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
And this building is due to be part of our master deed by 2011 if we do not have a condo association prior, prior to that, or 2012. And that building will be part of the condo association, so that devalues our property and defaces the property.
Okay, let's hear what the applicant has to say in response to him.
I do just wanna clarify in terms of the actual building. This also is for 527 Pawtucket Boulevard. I think the confusion is that, uh, when we submitted a request for the abutters list, uh, the assessor's office, office instructed us and required us to do it for 525 Pawtucket Boulevard. Uh, I'm not sure what their reasoning was, but it was, consider, 525 to 527 were considered on the same, I guess...
Parcel.
Major lots. The same building as the, as the existing installation, 527 Pawtucket Boulevard.
Oh, that's a total surprise to us, because I...
Ma'am, just, we can all hear you, but at home, and I'm sure there's millions watching right now, but they, they can't hear you from over there. They can't even see you. So, why don't we just, why don't we just wait to...
Uh, and then, in, in response to installing on the facade mount, uh, in the picture that was submitted, uh, that is T-Mobile's antenna that is installed on the facade of the building. Uh, we would be mirroring that, mirroring that installation, uh, with our particular antenna. Uh, in our negotiations with the ownership of the building, it was never, never brought to our attention that was, that was against, uh, any kind of covenant of the, of the condominium, and, uh, to our knowledge, it isn't.
And what do you say to that, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
He, uh, what the applicant is representing is that he's not, he, that he has permission from the owner to do that, and his understanding it is not against...
It's in our master deed and rules and regulations and the condo docs that you cannot face, attach anything to the facade of the building.
Okay, my que, I guess my question is just timing, and I'm not sure, maybe, and I'm remembering a little bit about this now, but not everything, but maybe that was attached before they, they finalized everything last time?
I really don't know, and it's actually a surprise that it's on the top of our building. We thought it was on the other building. So, it, it, we bring up the whole same scenario of security. We didn't even know that they had keys to access the building, 'cause we were told they would be escorted the last time.
Okay, sir?
Paul Mercier, 527 Pawtucket Boulevard. Uh, they did attach that at the end only because, the picture you have, only because they couldn't find another place for it. And it was stated at the last meeting that they would not attach anything to the facade, and they did, uh, which is against the condo rules and regulations. Uh, so, I, I guess basically, we're looking for a little more time, so we can, uh, maybe get legal counsel for our benefit, because we don't believe Princeton Properties, as the trustees, uh, helping the whole project itself. I tell, I think we're losing value. Uh, all of a sudden, if there's five more of these attachments, uh, I, it, it's just gonna look like a big radio antenna. We don't, we don't believe that, uh, there's a problem with the need of having cell towers. It's just the way they're doing it and attaching it to the building, which, uh, is just devaluing our property. Because all of a sudden, you have this beautiful building, and now you have these, uh, this equipment stuck to it. Uh, that picture, by the way, is recently covered over, because they made it look good, but prior to that, it was just like a, a big radiator stuck on the, uh, side of the building.
Okay, just out of curiosity, we, we, we had this meeting last time, and nobody was, we don't know why. We were trying to figure out why nobody came.
What, well, we, I, nobody knew about it. Uh, we just found out because we, somebody heard that you postponed it, because you believed that we didn't know about it, and, we didn't know about it.
Actually, Michael saw it on the TV.
Yeah, someone's seen it on TV.
We, we had an issue with that as well, because we were...
Prior? About a year ago?
No, this is, this is two weeks ago, and there was, we thought it, and found it unusual that nobody was here, because people were here the last time, a year ago, whenever that was, so we had the, we had our office check to make sure that everybody was notified, and we were assured that they were, so now I'm confused as to how...
Not everybody was notified.
You didn't get any green cards in the mail?
No. That's, that's how we found out.
And your, your owners, or...
Yes, we're owners, there's thirty-five owners, and we probably have signatures from thirty-two people, we don't have them all, if you, if you figure it all out, who would like a lease postponement, so we can consult with legal counsel.
Yeah, no, no, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I've just, I'm, I'm back to being confused about the notice requirement, do you have any, can I ask the applicant the question for one second?
I'm sorry.
Do you, do you have any idea what could have happened with the...
I honestly have no idea, I know that we, I met with Mr. Camacho on Tuesday, last Tuesday, and he assured me that the notice went out, as did, I don't recall her name, but the woman in the building department, who I submitted the application to, who also said that the meeting never would have been scheduled without the proper notice going out. I can't speak to it beyond that, I, I, but I do know that I was assured that the notice went out.
Okay, I, I thought, like, like I said before, I thought we had resolved that, but now I'm back to where, there's something there, so I, you know, I think they, it's a reasonable request for further continuance, because something's not right here, and as far as the outside of the building, we'll give you a chance to talk to whoever you need to talk to, and it will give us a chance through Mr. Camacho and Stephanie to figure out why these folks didn't get notified, and I have their names here, so maybe we can compare them to the green cards that either returned?
Well, we don't, the only time we get the cards returned is if, if they're undeliverable. The, the process is fairly simple, where the applicant applies to the, the assessor's office for a list of abutters, they're say, they receive that list, that list is given to the secretary, and she interns, if there's twenty abutters or eighty abutters, she'll print out that number of cards, peel off the address labels and put them on the cards, and then mail them and leave them in City Hall to be mailed at the proper department. Beyond that, we're not sure if, now, if any of those things can't be delivered, the post office returns them, and we retain those in our records, to the best of my knowledge, those that she indicated she sent out, none of those were returned, if so, there were only one or two, if, if that.
Okay, maybe if I could just ask a question that might clarify, anybody that was here, that is here, that did get a notice about, not this meeting, the last meeting, did any of you folks' owners get any notice at all?
Well, I, I did, but I was at a conference, but I know everybody else goes, I was the only one, I think.
Okay, so you got yours?
But nobody else got theirs, that's why I'm shocked nobody showed up, because they only showed up.
Ma'am, did you, did you, you got yours, did anybody else? You got yours? All right, well, either way, either way, I think...
They were in Europe, she was in Europe.
Well, well, I guess, I'm not asking if you physically got it in time, if, if you were in Europe, obviously, you know, you didn't get it, because you weren't around, did anybody who, did anybody get it at their house? If you did get it, all right, so the, then the issue remains about this appendage to the building, and what the issue with that is, and you don't really know anything about that now?
Uh, it was not brought to our knowledge at the time, when we were negotiating with the property owners, and I do know for a fact that their attorneys obviously reviewed the lease and the plans, and there were no issues brought to our attention, and we, I mean, we'd be more than happy to submit, to, I guess, go through another continuance, to do our due diligence on that homework, if, if the board would appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, I think they, it's a reasonable request, and, and, Mr. Camacho?
I, I would recommend that the, the Tenant Association, the condo association, bring that information to my office with regards to what was placed on that building, and they allegedly claim that that shouldn't be placed there, and there's something in the master deed, we'll cross-reference that with the minutes of their last meeting.
There is no Tenant Association right now, it's run by Princeton Property, who, the trustees, and also majority owners.
Okay, sir, you're from Princeton Properties, okay, can, can I talk, can you? So Bob, if you could address this gentleman about...
Sure, I, well, I, I guess I'm confused, if there's no condo association at this particular point in time, you say there is a master deed in place.
Correct.
I guess the question I have is, if, if it states in the master deed, it's not permitted to attach certain items, such as the one in, in question here, to the side of the building, is the master deed valid, valid, even though the, there is no condo association, the speaker?
There is a condo association, and we own the majority of the, the condos in the, in the association, and, and I can't speak to what the specifics are in the condo document without reviewing it, I, I'm not aware of any limitations at this point, but I, I would like to, to review it, and...
So I think what we're talking about is a two-week extension, you can contact Mr. Camacho with the zone, at the building department, and what you said, Bob, you'd cross-reference that document to...
Yes, because I, I remember at, at, at that meeting, that there was some reference made to mounting something, anything, to the side of the building, so what I would like to do is have them bring to me the information from the master deed that states whatever with regards to that, and...
Yeah, I know that, that the previous installation was, was done, you know, very stealth installation, there's just no visibility from the ground whatsoever, whatsoever, except for the facade-mounted antenna on the back of the building, everything in the, the center of the building is within a canister, as well as the proposal from Clear Wire, all the wires are in troughs, it, it's a very clean aesthetic installation, as proposed, and the existing installation also.
I, I think, and that, and that's fine, with that being said, this may have some impact, the only degree is to what impact this would have on the petitioner tonight, on placement and down the road.
Right, that, that's what we want to find out.
Correct, so I think what we need to do is, if we can get together at some point, and, and let's review that, we'll visit the site, we'll look at the documents, and then based on that, the applicant will be notified, and we'll let them know what we've discovered at that point in time.
Okay, is there anybody here that wants to address the board before we continue this, if that's what we're going to do, go ahead, ma'am?
Additionally, because Princeton Properties, the trustee, the major owner, and the property management company, is there any way to have any one of the resident owners present at that meeting, simply because, right now, they are collecting revenues from the current installation, but there's no guarantee that the contingency fund or our fund will continue to receive that, so what is going to happen with future monies if they have no intention of selling those condos, to make them into a condo association?
All I can tell you is that we dealt with this last time, and as much as we'd like to be able to help you with the, where the money's going, that's completely beyond the scope of the authority of this board, so we can't do that, all I can do is encourage you to get involved with the...
We've tried, they, they just ignore us, they, they're everything, so we're nothing.
Yeah, well, don't give up, I, that's, we, we can't help you with that, we wish we could, but we can't, go ahead, Jack.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just referencing the installation prior, technically, Princeton Property is the manager of the facility, that's, the, does the bank still own the building technically, and you, no, it's been, has it changed hands, and Princeton Property now owns the building?
Has changed hands, yes.
Okay, because prior, the banks had taken it over at that point, I, I believe, if my memory serves me correct, and it was, it was in some sort of transition at that period, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you, you have a copy of, of the deed that you can reference to address any of the issues that we're talking about?
Yes.
Terrific, thanks.
Okay, anybody else want to address the board with regard to this petition at all? No one? Okay, need a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue till November the 23rd, 2009.
Second.
Okay, before we take a vote on that, how many petitions do we have on for that night, I think we just got...
Four petitions for new business, Mr. Chairman.
Right, that's fine.
Okay, roll call, Stephanie?
Who's the date? November what? Continue to November 23rd.
Continue.
Continue to November 23rd.
Continue till eleven, uh, November 23rd.
Continue to November 23rd.
Okay, this matter's been continued to November 23rd, there'll be no requirement for any further notice, anybody wishing to address the board may do so that evening, thank you very much. Okay, the next petition is ZB 2009 number forty-five, special permit for telecommunications Clear Wireless LLC, 403 Andover Street. This is petitions for the installation of telecommunications panel antenna, three of them, two addition antennas and related equipment inside a stealth steeple housing and related equipment on side of the church for clear wireless according to section seven point six of the zoning ordinance. I want to read one letter I received into the record, this is a letter from, to the members of the zoning board of appeals, from Catherine Murphy, zoning officer, this is dated today, November ninth, 2009, regarding 403 Andover Street, this request only requires a special permit from the zoning board for the installation of any type of telecommunications antenna used pursuant to section seven point six. This request does not require a variance for height, as all types of chimneys, domes, spires, towers are exempt from height requirements per section five point two point seven. Welcome, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, my name is Andrew Thompson, here in representation of Clear Wireless LLC, here after Clear Wire, as a result of our last presentation with the board, I know there were some questions specifically to alternate candidates, obviously outside of that, the zoning letter regarding the variance, so what I was hoping to approach the board with was a, an affidavit.
Before we get going, is there a, I, I sense that most of the folks in the audience are here for this petition, did they, is there an extra, did anybody see a copy of this?
I, I can circulate it afterwards, if that's okay, and provide copies, but I do, I do only just have the one copy.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can work on with, with Corey, so why don't we start over that side and see if, just because we'll be waiting for them all to read it, and I haven't read it yet either. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, the document that I've submitted entitled affidavit of site acquisition specialist, what that, what this document essentially does is provide a scope of the work that I've done on this particular project, and in general, what my profession entails. Typically, as we've discussed, what I do is, I'm provided a search ring with specific candidates, I'm sorry, with specific coordinates, coordinates of a coverage area of where we need to actually provide coverage in a given location. Once I'm given those coordinates, I actually go out and drive the ring, looking for, obviously, candidates that fit into a number of different categories, those sort of requirements that we look at in terms of finding a wireless location, obviously, we keep the zoning ordinance in mind, trying to find sites that are best spirited in compliance with the zoning ordinance. That being said, we also look for existing structures to install our antennas on, so existing towers, existing buildings, existing church steeples. In this particular case, there were three candidates outside of the, the candidate that were here before you for Lowell Mission Church, that were looked at and analyzed in the context of this ring. The first candidate was the Peter W. Riley Elementary School, located at 115 Douglas Road, as well as the James Sullivan Middle School, which is essentially located just next door, on a very similar parcel, 150 Draper Street. We did speak with the superintendent of schools, and it was indicated that there was no interest in having a wireless facility located on or at those schools. From there, Lowell Mission Church was our next best option in terms of fitting inside of the search ring, as well as providing some sort of structure that we could utilize to provide the coverage that we are required to provide per the FCC and the Federal Telecommunications Act. That being said, after our last meeting, we also did an analysis on the Saints Medical Center, per some of the abutters questions regarding, I guess, just the height of the building and the fact that it's an existing location. What we found in analyzing that site is, number one, that it is too far outside of the existing search ring to provide the required coverage that we are mandated to provide per our FCC license, as well as we found that it is very close to existing search rings and existing sites where we're currently in leasing negotiations that would provide almost identical, if not redundant, coverage.
Okay.
We, we do have coverage maps that show the coverage that would come from Saints Medical Center, if that's something that the board would like to look at.
I think last meeting, we, we suggested maybe looking into some other options in the more commercial area rather than the residential, that people didn't seem to favor, for obvious reasons, but have you checked out Rogers Street, and, you know, Hanaford, and there's a few other higher buildings, you've got a golf course, you, Long Meadow, you've got Brooks Pharmacy, the White Hen, and that, there's a tower that goes on, in that parcel, I believe?
Again, in driving, there's a very specific, I guess, area of coordinates that, that I know that I can drive in terms of finding coverage in this ring, and in, in searching and in looking on the roads that actually fall into this particular coverage ring, there were no other existing candidates in terms of commercial lots where we could install on an existing structure. Outside of installing this stealth steeple, we're looking at a, a new tower in what is obviously a very residential area, you know, we truly believe in terms of, obviously, meeting the FCC license and our required coverage needs, and the actual level of service that we are required to provide to, to our customers, that this is the best facility that we can possibly provide, based on level of trusiveness in the public, utilizing existing structure, and obviously falling short of putting up a new tower in the city.
Well, if you didn't, if hypothetically, if this church didn't exist, what would you do?
We would probably be looking at putting a new tower somewhere in this area, which obviously would be very difficult to do, given the dense residential nature of the area.
Right, but where could you put it, I mean, where, where, I can't, I can't imagine a place in that area where you could put a tower.
Well, I mean, I think that's part of the argument towards why we're actually looking at this stealth steeple, is, you know, I mean, I've certainly seen towers, monopoles that are built right up against the building, we could certainly put, we could certainly construct it and fit it, but it would cer- it would go against the, the very nature of the bylaw in terms of using existing structures, avoiding putting up new facilities, certainly, we could construct a site somewhere, but do we feel that there's a feasible location in the search ring for a brand-new tower? No.
Okay.
Little question for the petitioner, based on a few of the things you just talked about, when you mentioned the two schools, and you're talking about a tower, can you describe what that would look like?
Uh, it would probably be a hundred-foot steel monopole, so essentially, a brown stick, sometimes they're described as, that would be coming out of the ground, and then, depending on the design and the capacity of the site, it could be, the panel antennas and, and back hall dishes could be installed inside of that pole, as well as, you will see various locations, I'm sure throughout the city, as well as, you know, across the state, that are, the antennas are actually mounted to the outside of the pole, in what you would call a raise, that actually, they protrude from the pole.
So you're talking about actually constructing from the ground level?
It'd be, it'd be a brand-new tower, we'd install a concrete foundation, probably approximately a hundred-foot monopole, and then the antennas to be installed at the top of that monopole.
So when we look at existing facilities, like the Wang Tower, or even on Pataca Boulevard, are there towers that were constructed from the ground? I guess I'm trying to understand, as opposed to, everything seems to be built, all the equipment is on top of the facilities, I'm trying to understand, why, why is there a tower that has to be built, as opposed to something going on top of the building?
I, well, I guess in this particular location, to, obviously, you know, as I said, and as it's attached to in the site acquisition affidavit, we like to look for existing structures to install our facilities on, because we find that that's generally most, I guess, in the spirit of the telecommunications bylaws in cities and towns, as well as just meeting the zoning bylaws in terms of needing variances, special permits, that kind of thing. Again, in this particular situation, we weren't able to find any existing buildings with the necessary height that we would need to, to essentially fill this coverage gap, which is why we're proposing this stealth steeple, and in turn, I guess, now...
So how do, how do the two schools get picked out, if it's a height requirement?
The two, the two schools...
If you've got to build a tower?
The two schools get picked out as potential raw land candidates, so they get picked out as potential candidates for a tower to be built. Generally, when we're looking for sites, municipal properties...
Yep.
...tend to go high up on the list, because a lot of times, cities are interested in the additional revenue that these types of sites can provide, the city or the town. We have seen in various cities and towns, bylaws that actually require you to consider municipal properties. municipal properties prior to any private land. So those, so those schools were brought in as potential raw land candidates if the city was willing to entertain, excuse me, building a tower at those locations.
Okay. Another thing you mentioned was, you were talking about, just briefly, can you talk about what the FCC mandates?
Yeah, so pursuant to the FCC and our, and the licenses that we're granted, we are required to provide a certain level of reliable service and coverage to our, to our customers, and in order to do that, we, in order to do that, we need to be able to build out our coverage and build out sites in the city of Lowell to be able to provide that level of coverage.
So to the chairman's point, when he asked the question about another viable site, which might entail building a tower, if you have no coverage area at all in that particular area, what does that mean to Clear Wireless?
I mean, it means that they have no service and they're not going to have any customers in that area.
Just to that area?
In this particular area, yes. So these sites obviously provide coverage into a limited footprint and a limited, I guess, a limited number of customers in the given area of the site, which is why, obviously, there are multiple applications before you to try and provide continuous coverage in the city of Lowell.
So you're trying to blanket the city of Lowell?
Exactly, just as any other cell, as any other wireless carrier-
Right.
-you know, Verizon, AT&amp;T, we are trying to provide reliable service to the, to the customers in the city of Lowell.
But again, if you don't have any facility in the section of the city we're talking about, the people that reside in that area would have no coverage?
We would be effectively prohibited from providing them reliable service in this area.
Just to that area?
In relation to this particular site, as the coverage maps that were submitted show, there, there is a limited footprint that these sites provide, so this area, so it would be generally this specific area of the city that would be affected by that lack of coverage.
Okay. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Jack, anything?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. There's a dollar value placed when you approach any business, municipality, is that correct?
What's that?
There's a dollar value, I would assume, that's, that's placed on, when you approach the municipality, or you approach a hospital, or this particular church, there's a dollar value. Was that the, the reason that the school stated there was no interest?
Absolutely did not factor in. We were unequivocally told that the school was not interested in entertaining proposals whatsoever for a wireless facility, and then even to speak to that further, we actually would not be able to enter into direct negotiations with the school or the city. They would be required to release an RFP, which we would, which we would obviously then respond to. So it never even got to the conversation of dollar amount with the city. We were told unequivocally that they were not interested.
In getting to Mr. Bailey's point about building a facility from the ground up, there was no other location within the specific radius that you're looking at where a structure could be built from the ground up?
No, and I think it's a, it is a very challenging area to provide service and coverage to, because it is, the area is residential in nature, so it doesn't lend itself to 100-foot steel monopole being built versus what we see here is a stealth steeple going on a church where there currently is no steeple, and the antennas are then camouflaged completely inside of the steeple. In our minds and in trying to comply with the zoning ordinance, we feel that we're, we're doing a much better job in terms of camouflaging the site and having the least possible effect on the surrounding communities versus putting up a brand-new 100-foot steel tower.
How tall would the tower have been from the ground up if you had built it?
Typically, typically, new towers are constructed for probably anywhere from 80 to 150 feet, and that is generally dictated by the zoning bylaws, which also generally require the tower to be built for multiple carriers to allow for co-location, which requires the height to go a certain level above the tree line. So again, in terms of visual obtrusiveness, we really feel that this is the least visually obtrusive solution here.
Excuse my ignorance, but basic math here, so if you have a 150-foot tower and you found a building that was 75 feet high, the tower would be 75 feet on top of the building?
No, 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 no. So when we're talking about putting up a tower, we're talking about putting up a brand-new tower that's constructed into the ground, there's any, you would be putting a foundation-
Yeah, I was just referencing, again, excuse my ignorance, if a tower, the height of the tower is going to do, I presume, what you need to because of the height as far as getting to the radius, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So if it's 150 feet and there's 75 feet on top of a building, or 50 feet on top of a building, that doesn't presume to be the same? Is that what you're telling me?
So I guess you're asking if we could put a 75-foot extension onto a building?
Correct.
Structurally, it tends not to be viable. A 75-foot extension on a building is, is obviously certainly a lot.
Well, if the building were, if the building were 125 feet high, can there be a 25-foot tower?
Again, that would fall under the purview of the board. Typically, 125-foot building wouldn't need a 25-foot extension onto it. Generally, within the rules of the bylaw, we design these sites at the minimum height for them to actually provide the coverage that we need in the area. Is that, is that speaking to your question a little bit?
I think so. Again, I apologize for my ignorance, I'm just, I'm looking at footage here, and obviously, as you can see from, you know, one of the difficult aspects we have, and we're certainly well aware, because we've dealt with petitions-
Mm-hmm.
...from the wireless community before, and certainly understand the FCC's position. And as the chairman alluded to, we have denied petitions, and it's been appealed and upheld, denied, I should say, the appeal's been upheld. Our concern, obviously, is when we have the numbers of, of neighbors who have turned out, that we're trying to find some alternatives and just ensure them that you've exhausted every avenue, and then our position would be to make them aware, aware of the fact that once that's been done, unfortunately, I don't think we have much recourse as far as the FCC's concerned. Thank you.
Wesen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The steeple, how high is it going to be?
Just pull out the planes real quick. So the, the top of the steeple is 55 feet.
And the equipment, is it going to be inside the steeple again?
It'll be installed entirely inside the steeple, so, sorry. As you can see here, the, the top of the steeple is right here at 55 feet, and then you can see the actual panels and backhaul antennas are installed directly inside of the steeple, 100% outside of the view of any surrounding residents. They'll be 100% concealed within the steeple.
So when your staff is coming in to do service, they would go inside the steeple?
Completely inside the steeple, that is correct.
And again, is this similar to the other facility, when you guys come in, would be like once or twice a month?
Yes, and entering into lease negotiations with the church, we have discussed with them that, obviously, again, we do operate during normal business hours, nine to five, Monday through Friday. Special consideration is also given to this particular site in terms of Sunday visits, because obviously, it is an operating church, and, you know, obviously, we would do our best to avoid Sunday visits. Again, outside of normal business hours, the only time we would visit is if an emergency required that.
All right, thank you. What is, on the roof now, I, I can't picture, what is, is there anything there? Isn't there a, right?
It's an, it's an empty base.
There's a base, though.
It's an, it's an empty base.
So that would go up from there at, to a point?
What's that? Ah, yeah, we, so we would be installing directly onto that base, exactly, and then, I think there was, we do have some, just photo simulations that were looked at in the last hearing, so I'll kind of give you an idea.
Do you have a copy for the, anybody out there? So you said that you approached the school department and to see if they were interested. Just out of curiosity, what, how much money are we giving up for not considering that? Is that, I mean, do you have any idea, based on other municipalities?
Um, it's-
Is it $10,000 a month?
No.
$5,000 a month?
No.
Do I have to go all the way down, or are you going to tell me?
It's, it would be below $2,000, in a, in a comfortable range, somewhere in that area, but again, that would all depend on the, the actual bidders for the site. I would assume for a new raw land on municipal property, there would probably be, you could see multiple bidders coming in for the RFP.
Okay. All right, I was curious as to that, so.
Generally, the schools aren't the most well-received sites in terms of municipal property. We, the normal municipal properties that we would look at would be DPW sites, water tanks, those types of sites.
Okay. Corey?
Yes, so you, Mr. Chairman. Well, to the petitioner's credit, I mean, it is a church, and a steeple is not out of line on top of a church, and you can, did a good job concealing it. However, now, what I'd like to ask here, why does Clear Wireless now, I'll give you an example, the petition before, this 525 Pataca Boulevard, we just approved two weeks ago, one on East Meadow Road, to an existing tower. I mean, this is pretty close proximity, so I'd like to, you to clarify this for me. It seems like Clear Wireless needs far more cell towers than, you know, your big cellphone providers, Sprint, Verizon, whatnot. Am I accurate on that prediction?
I would, I don't know that I would say far more, but we, again, the nature of the frequency, we are licensed by the FCC to operate in a specific frequency band. That frequency band, again, has a much smaller footprint than what you would see with the frequency band from Verizon, from T-Mobile, from AT&amp;T, and then, again, you know, we have provided those coverage maps that do show that without these sites, there are significant gaps in the coverage.
I don't deny that there's a lapse in coverage, yes, and the FCC mandates, that's great and all, but the thing is, you're encroaching, you know, this, because you do need, that all what you said translates into needing more tel, cell, cell towers, that's the bottom line here. Now, I mean, cross-point towers is one thing, an existing tower on top of Drum Hill is, is fine, but now, you're getting really in the trenches there in residential, and petition above this, before this, it's, you're 10 feet above a dwelling, okay? And this is a very thick residential neighborhood here, that everybody takes pride in the neighborhood and the character, okay? And I need to see due diligence, that you pursued all avenues before you go in a residential neighborhood like this, like the chairman stated, golf courses, I don't know, I don't know, I don't have a solution for you, but I know you're getting awful close to residential neighborhoods here. And I know the FCC's mandates that you give a lapse of coverage, but I'm not going to sit here and just say, "Put it anywhere to comply with the FCC." No, I'm not necessarily in agreement with this. Okay? I don't feel that you pursued all avenues on this one, really. I know, and in many cases, we've denied them, and FCC goes, and you get approved, but that doesn't mean I'm going to sit here and give carte blanche, because, you know, that's the case. I mean, I just need to see a little more due diligence here. I mean, you pursued, what, an elementary school or a middle school?
Again, I think the avenues that we've pursued, we are, again, in our particular position, we are confined to a very specific area in order to provide coverage into this residential area, and, you know, again, I can tell you personally, I've driven the roads of this search ring at least two or three times, and that, given the candidates that are out there, and the unique challenges that this search ring presents, which, you know, obviously, I understand that your concerns about encroaching into a residential section, which is obviously why, this is, this speaks to why we've gone with this, this specific design that we have gone with. It would be, it'd be much easier-
I commend you with your design, yeah.
And I, and I appreciate that, and I, you know, I do, but I think it would be much easier for this, for this carrier, if the board would allow it to just come in and put a tower into this parking lot. Obviously, that's not, obviously, that's not a viable option in this area, and again, with what we're trying to do here with this particular steeple base, you know, some people would, would say that this empty steeple base is an eyesore, so we really do feel that we're coming in and not necessarily, you know, I know, I understand that there are some concerns about the installation being here, but we really do feel that we're coming into the neighborhood and providing this steeple to this church, as well as being able to provide coverage to, you know, our consumers and our customers.
Well, it's just that, it seems like Clear Wireless needs a vast number of cell towers to have coverage in the city. It seems like you need quite a few of them compared to the other providers that are in the city.
I-
And it is considerably more, let's start-
If I could respond to that just a little bit here-
Sure.
The, there's sort of, I think, two issues at play there that are influencing that. Number one, right now, is that ClearWire is a brand-new carrier with no coverage in the city of Lowell, and they are currently planning to launch their coverage in the Boston market within the next six months. So what you're seeing right now is obviously a number of sites coming before you, but I think what you'll also note is that with, apart from this particular site, we are going on other locations where carriers currently are installed. So I think to say that we need that many more than the existing carriers, I'm not sure if that's a necessarily, it is correct that we do need maybe a few more, but a characterization that we need that many more, I think is a little bit unfair based on the, the newness of the business, as well as the fact that we are locating our antennas in several locations where I think every other petition before you has an existing carrier at that site.
Yeah, I understand the newness of your business, and that's great, though, but you, like you said, you do need a few more than your average cell, and the few more are unfortunately the ones that are encroaching into residential homes, in some cases, in the same units, I mean, directly above a dwelling, so it just seems that I'm not in favor of putting these things just in a residential neighborhood. I don't like it. There's a place for these things, and I don't think this is it, but I'd like to hear from the other board members and the abutters, see what I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I can't remember if there was a tower already out there on that building. I know there was a dome at one time. Is that correct, Bob? There was a, was there a dome out there?
There was a tower on that building when these folks just purchased, when they purchased it, and I believe there was some, some structural issues, and they thought it was in everybody's best interest to, to take it down.
Okay. Thank you. The equipment cabinet you have outside, it's going to be in the, right here inside of the building, will you be trying to screen that for the?
I'm sorry, what's that?
The equipment cabinet on the side of the building?
Ah, yes, we're welcome to any, any requirements or any conditions set forth by the board. It would be on the side of the building fenced in, and then obviously landscaping would be placed around that to, again, shield it from the view of any abutters or people passing by.
My next question to the building commissioner, Bob, is this in the historic district? I know they extended the historic up there, did they not, on both sides of the road, I think, within a couple hundred feet?
It's not in the historic district, and if there's any historic overseeing, I think it's limited.
Okay.
But that's a very good point.
I know that there are some houses, I know one, Dave Daley had built a house, and it did, did fall into it, they had to comply with clad boards, windows, because it faced Andover Street. I'm just asking the question because I don't want people to ask the question and then have the answer that, yes, they have to.
Well, I, I think the other way to address that as well is if, if the board decides to approve this, okay, the actual design of the tower would, and if that is in fact the case, the worst scenario, the actual design of the tower would have to be run by historic-
Okay.
-for approval?
All right, thank you.
I did approach the historic commission and explained to them the project, and I was told that it was, I was told by them that it was outside their purview, but again, with the final design of the steeple, we'd be more than happy to work with the historic commission to make sure that it met their standards and the standards of the neighborhood aesthetically.
All right. Thank you. That's all the questions.
But, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I may, I apologize for not, excuse me, asking this question earlier. You're building this structure for the owner of the church, correct? For the church?
Yes.
I'm referring to the steeple.
The church will own the structure, they will own the steeple.
And there's going to be a lease agreement between you?
We have entered into a lease agreement with, with the church at this point.
Who is going to be responsible for the external maintenance of the building, of the, of the tower itself?
I think we, I, you know, I, I would have to clarify, but the external maintenance would certainly fall into sort of our concern, making sure that our site is proper, is properly functioning.
So you understand the concern of some of the neighbors?
Absolutely.
They, when they spoke, they made reference, and I'm, you know, I drive that road also quite a bit, and historically, that structure has fallen on difficult times, disarray. The new church that's taken over has upgraded the church significantly. I think what they're concerned about is if the church is sold, for whatever reason, new tenants come in, they reach a lease agreement with you, their concern is what's going to happen to the building itself, externally, the tower, is that going to fall in disarray? Or is your sole concern interior and the maintenance of the equipment inside the building only?
No, the, the actual steeple itself is designed in a manner so that it is what we call RF transparent, so that the actual signal from the antennas can- transparent, so that the actual signal from the antennas can get through the steeple. As such, you know, again, the...
I'm referring to the actual materials of the structure itself.
Yes, so, so the interior or the exterior?
Exterior.
The exterior of the structure, again, that would, we would certainly have a very large stake in making sure that that was, did not fall into disrepair, because it would affect the functioning of our site if it did. We, you know, we'd be more than happy to submit to conditions of keeping it in a certain level, I guess, a certain level of, I guess, non-disrepair, a certain condition that is acceptable to the surrounding community.
Well, basically, it's the owner's responsibility to maintain the structure. There is a minimum maintenance requirement under the state building code. Even if that requirement is met, I should also tell you that it, a structure still may not be pleasing to the eye, it still meet minimum standards, but ultimately, it's the responsibility of the owner of the structure to maintain it. And they could, in this case, the tenant leasing the interior of that structure, if they so choose, they could work out an arrangement with the owner, but ultimately, if there were an issue or problem or something was brought to our attention in the building department, we would speak to the owner about it.
I bring up the point only because it was brought up by some of the abudders at the previous meeting, I just wanted to make sure that's addressed, and if that could be a condition, and we get to that point, that's something that I would welcome. Thank you.
Okay. I guess my question is, where is the closest existing tower?
The closest existing tower?
That you could tie into?
Do you, you can probably speak better than I can.
I know you must have eliminated that, so my question is, you know, where are we talking about what we eliminated?
Yeah, I've got a plot. For the record, my name is A.J. Savant, and I'm the radio frequency for Clear Wireless. With me, I have a plot which shows the ground elevation of the area.
Where's the locus we're talking about? If you could point to that, the proposed site?
The center red dot is the proposed facility with the church, and the blue dot you see are all neighboring sites we are planning on to put our antenna on. And this red square is where the Saints Medical Center is.
Okay.
As you can see, it's very like a block away from our other site, which is the Noel Housing Authority. It's right next to us. And we did try and see whether we could provide coverage or, but let me explain the colors of this map.
Yeah.
You see this red, the dots here, like blobs, those are the areas of higher elevation, and as the color goes lighter towards the elevation drops. As you can see, there's a bit right in between Highway 108 and other side of the town, and that's what limits coverage from these sites to provide coverage on other sides of the area.
Right, so I guess my question is, if you go inbound towards the city, about a quarter of a mile, there's higher buildings, there's the Belvedere Apartments that are there across from Kittredge Park, and across the street from that, I believe it's the Nesmith House, but it's a, you know, it's a larger facility, quasi-public facility, definitely, the apartments are residential, but they're, you know, I looked at them, it appears to be some sort of, antennas attached to them anyway, I don't know, and there's some...
Most of these sites have wireless facilities on the neighborhood, the blue dots you see.
Right, but you're going too far there, I think. If you just go, if you point to the existing site, and you go down this way towards the city, if you're going down Andover Street, before you get to the crossroad of Nesmith Street, which isn't all that far, it's about, I mean, my guess is it's about a quarter mile, is that within your coverage? Because my question, if it is, then why wouldn't you, why wouldn't that be a more desirable site? It's higher, it's higher, the topography's higher, and it has an existing building there, and it's more congested already.
We do have a site there.
But you're pointing to Saints, right?
Just below it, the blue dot.
Yeah, where is that? What's that exact location?
That's High Street.
That's High Street, 117 High Street.
I'm going, I'm going towards your site, towards the proposed site considerably.
If I can speak to that, I think...
Go ahead.
Driving the Andover Street are those, I think they're residential appearance buildings, if I'm not, is that who you're speaking to, or...
One of them, yes.
Which...
They're apartment buildings.
Brick buildings.
There's multiple brick buildings there, at least two, maybe three, I'm not sure exactly. But I guess, I guess where I'm going with this is, if, you know, it's a very difficult site that you're proposing, you know, for there, it's right smack in the middle of residential, there was, I do remember a tower being on that, I don't know what happened to it, but what, you're telling us that you looked at alternative sites. So, my question is, because I can think of several alternative sites, you know, I'd like to look into whether or not we can get some peer review, we can hire a consultant, possibly through the Board of Appeals, to verify what you're telling us, and I'm not in any way suggesting that you're, that you're misrepresenting yourself, I'm just, I've got my own questions, because I know that that's, I think, a quarter of a mile, I believe it's west of where you're talking about.
Right.
Right, towards downtown. I mean, on the same, across the street, but within the same basic neighborhood, right? And it's higher, the topography's higher there, and then you've got existing buildings, and it's, you know, more commercialized in that area, just because of those buildings. So, I don't know that, in my mind, I'm satisfied that you've knowingly checked out all possible and viable alternatives to that. That's, you know, I would have a hard time understanding why that site wouldn't be a more desirable site.
I mean, we're more than happy to take a look at it and provide documentation as to whether or not it is feasible. Again, you know, again, there are multiple facets that go into these decisions, including landlord interest, and I'm also, based on the, you know, how we're being received with the board, going on the apartment building as an alternate, is that really going, is that going to be received more positively, I guess, would also be a question.
Well, that's a good point, but...
I mean, we're more than happy to look into it as an alternate. We can take a look at it, include it in our alternate analysis, provide the coverage maps, and...
All right, well, let's hear what the, that's one of my questions, and just want to know how much we're giving up in the city, but I understand their desire not to want to put it on the school, but maybe hear from the public, and maybe we'll get some good input from them, and see where we go.
Just real quick, just quickly, you said you guys had tied into Sprint?
Yes, we do have a relationship with Sprint. Sprint is a majority stakeholder.
So Sprint, Sprint does not have a tower on that side of Lowell?
They do not have a feasible location that would provide coverage into this area for us.
What's feasible location mean?
They do not have a, they don't have a site in this search ring that would provide coverage for this gap in our, in our coverage that we're trying to fill.
So, you need to have this facility on Andover Street?
In order to meet, in order to meet our coverage objectives, this is, this facility, from us driving the search ring and approaching potential landlords, this, again, is the facility that we feel has been designed at the minimum height to meet our required objective needs.
Yeah, so for your site's selection process, that's the only area that you're looking at, to meet the needs for your search ring?
What is illustrated in the coverage map? That is the coverage that we are providing, based on this site, yes.
Okay. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, A.J. just has one more piece of material he'd like to submit to the board.
Sure.
These are emissions reports.
Emissions reports, okay. In favor of this petition? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, that portion of public hearings closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition?
Hi, my name's Barry Coombs, 15 Carriage Drive in Lowell. I did have a couple of questions, I was here a few weeks ago, so I'm just trying to follow up on a few things. The definition of a co-location, I believe Mr. Bailey was asking a question, I'm just trying to, what the board's interpretation was a co-location, I thought it was like telco with telco. The other one I had a question was about the facility's setbacks, whether or not, under the policy 7.6.6, the setbacks was equal to the height of the tower versus the corner lot, being that the height of the tower is 55 feet, I didn't know if the setbacks were approved from the side of the street versus front of the Andover Street?
I don't think that's applicable here, Bob is...
No, I don't think it is. I think the reference is to a freestanding tower that could be as much as 150 feet high, as opposed to a structure that's on a building.
It's an existing structure, so it's a little bit different than, I know what you're referring to, but it's a little bit different, because there's already an existing structure, and they're going to propose to build a steeple on top of that, and house everything within the steeple.
Okay.
So, and my memory, and you live there too, so my memory is there was a steeple on this, very similar to what's...
I'm new, I've only been there a few months, so, you know, I don't...
Does anybody know the answer to that? Was it, if you could, you have to step up the podium, so, sorry, and state your name and address, so I can...
Jeff Prazom from 30 Carriage Drive. There was never a steeple of that size on that church.
There was never a steeple?
Of that size, no.
Do you remember what it was? I remember there being a...
There was a dome there in a very small steeple, but never a steeple that went one and a half times the height of the church.
On top of the dome?
On top of the dome, on top of the, on top of the church itself.
Okay, I do remember something, so, okay.
And then the other remarks was with this Clear Wireless, with the service that they provide being 24 megahertz, it seems like they are going to put a lot of tower, or sell equipment all over the town. It just seems that maybe that's not the service we want in town, if they're going to put it all over the place, whether it be 100 feet or a quarter of a mile, it doesn't seem logical service that we would want. Just my opinion on that one, I guess.
No, it's a good point, and that's why, you know, I've, I'm leaning towards looking into the issue of whether we can get some peer review here, or have the authority, and I think we do, under 48, to hire a consultant to look at this, to verify what's being presented, so we can see that, you know, they, because otherwise, I think, we have very limited authority to strike down this proposal if they meet all their requirements. My question is, did they meet it, and how do we know? They're representing, they drove around, and I believe them, but, you know, I'd like to have somebody else check it and report back to us, if we have that capability in the city of Lowell, I think we do.
Well, not just this location, they may be, where they're starting to get into where their bandwidth is not that high, are they going to get into other residents where they're going to be right on top, and under the FCC rules, they can do pretty much whatever they want. So, they could be putting on a triple-deck house, I know you guys don't houses, but I'm just saying, you're going to get into, well, okay, that's our bandwidth, and that's what we have to do, I don't feel that's right. I mean, that's, you know, I don't want the service then, I don't, I don't think it's good for the community if you're going to be putting the towers everywhere, so.
Right, I think that's, you know, an issue for the FCC guidelines that they have to follow. I don't know that it's particularly whether you or I want it or not, I don't think that's the issue. I think that they have a right to come in and offer it, and at least that's the way I understand it, it's very technical, as you probably know.
Yeah, just, yeah, well, just because the FCC says, you know, they're allowed to, you know, that they can have a license to do so, doesn't mean it's proper for them to, you know, just to put up wherever they want, it just because...
No, I believe, in what they've represented, I believe that they have to look at alternative sites, and the first thing is to find an existing location, and I think that's where we go to the co-location, and I think we had two different meanings going last time, but, you know, try to put it in an existing location, that way it doesn't really have any practical impact on anything, because something's already there, so you wouldn't notice it one way or the other. And that's their first thing to do, and they have to be within a coverage zone, and they have to have a need for it, you know, it's...
Right, but if they can't find it, then they're just going to put up a cell tower 180 foot high, if they want to, just because the FCC allows them to do so. Whether or not it's good for the community or for the neighborhood, whether it's all residential or whatever, it's just because they're allowed to put in, because their coverage doesn't go that far.
Well, they have to have, they have to own the land to do that, I don't, they can't just come in and invade some...
They can just throw $1,000 a month, or $2,000, or $4,000 a month, and whoever's going to need it nowadays, will gradually, you know, take a five-year lease on that.
That's a good point.
So, I think that's all I have for them.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Good evening, members of the...
Tony Wyker, how you doing?
Good, my name is Raymond Wyker, I'm here speaking on behalf of my client, James and Cheryl Hall, who live at budding property at 14 Penticham Avenue. I'd like to address several of the matters that were raised here today, and having litigated several cell tower matters, I can address some of the issues with respect to the FCC's authority and lack of authority in zoning. Very simply, the zoning act of Massachusetts does have some say in this matter, the FCC guarantee does not in any way guarantee the petitioner's the right to come in and put up 180-foot tower. As a matter of fact, there's specific case law on point that states that they are not guaranteed the cheapest, most convenient solution, and that this board may still impose its requirements. They must be willing to consider other alternatives, and this board has a lot of authority. This board has the authority to simply require peer review, this board has the authority to require a comprehensive map for every location they plan to put in the city as part of their build-out, and have that reviewed for whether or not there are ways to put in lower towers, or whether or not there are ways to use existing telephone poles to fill in some of these smaller gaps in coverage, rather than throwing five-and-a-half-story monstrosities inside of residential neighborhoods. There's been a lot of talk today about what's going on in their minds and what's going on in their feelings, but they haven't thought about what's going on in fact. And what's going on in fact here is that a neighborhood is being destroyed with a five-and-a-half foot, five-and-a-half-story monstrosity being thrown up in the middle of it that didn't previously exist, and is inconsistent with the neighborhood. This board, before making any determinations whether to grant or deny, should make sure that it establishes substantial evidence. When you are going in front of the courts, when you are going up to the federal districts, you must have a record of substantial evidence. You can insist on a peer review in order to build that record of substantial evidence, and assess that cost to the petitioner. There are different peer review agencies out there, there was one used by the town of Grafton, that was a Broadcast Signal Labs, that company I'm familiar with, because it has been used in other towns nearby, and has done peer review for several of our neighboring towns. I will also tell you that while there may not have been a requirement for a zoning variance, it was somewhat deceptive in the notice that was sent out to the abudders stating that this was simply an attachment to an existing building. Many people were not aware of the fact that this was going to require an additional two stories above the normal three-and-a-half allowed in the area, thereby creating more of an eyesore in the neighborhood. This board has the authority to consider the visual and aesthetic concerns of the neighborhood, provided that those are the reasons, and that these are not a pretext for denying coverage, this board can consider the visual impact on a neighborhood in determining whether or not to deny. I would suggest that a peer review would best suit the determination as to whether or not there are available alternatives in order to minimize the impact on this community. We are talking about a traditional single-family neighborhood, which is a very established neighborhood, very old, people who've been there for a very long time, care about their community, and have a vested interest in making sure that the minimum impact is created. We heard earlier testimony from individuals who came in and told you that the master deed in their building had been violated by another company, and this is something which this board should take very seriously. It should take it very seriously, because zoning in part protects property values, and when we allow violations of zoning or violations of deeds to go unchecked and unpunished, we decrease our property values, and we decrease our tax base. But getting back to the relevant issues, we have not yet seen an evaluation showing all the other locations. This board can very simply say, "I'm sorry, you can't put a tower right in the middle of your gap, but we will allow you to put two smaller towers at the fringes of your gap." That is permissible under the case law. This board has that authority, but this board needs to have a peer review done in order to determine what are the available alternatives. And I apologize, I'm moving through a few things very quickly here. This board can also look to what are the, what are available locations on neighboring towns, which may have additional high towers, which could fill these gaps. If we were to have to rule out whether or not a 120-foot tower sitting across the river is capable of filling this low-lying area of Lowell, that is something that should also be reviewed. It's 120 feet, sitting on top of elevation to begin with, it certainly would have range, the question is, would it have coverage? But we don't have any independent analysis. While I understand that these providers come in and they have a certain ring, they say, "Well, this is our most economic value ring, if we put one inside this circle, it will be the minimum number of towers or facilities to install," that's not the standard that this board should look to. This board should look to its own zoning laws and its ability to enforce them. If they're going to grant this special permit, if it's going to be granted inside a residential neighborhood, it should be enforced that every other alternative has been exhausted. There are numerous alternatives that are available that have not been addressed. While you can't determine what technology that is used, that is a matter of FCC regulation, you can determine the height that it is used and leave the individuals the option to conform or use other available technologies. Were this board to simply say, "You may put up nothing higher than an existing telephone pole," there are what are called distributed antenna systems, which could be mounted on existing telephone poles. They are coffee cans-sized pole mounts, which are completely concealable and are arranged in a network which would otherwise cover small gaps. If we're talking about a small gap, then these are the most appropriate, suitable, and could be conformed most tightly to a neighborhood. If we are talking about a large gap, then we could be talking about locating larger poles on existing taller structures. But again, a peer review would be necessary in order to do this. And finally, I would note that the courts have been very clear that the burden on whether or not there is a substantial gap that cannot be filled in any other means rests 100% solely on the shoulders of the petitioner, and they must demonstrate by explicit facts that they have exhausted every other available opportunity, not just simply, "I drove the neighborhood and this seemed best." They must show that they have gone to every other building. They must show that they have gone to every other landowner. They must show that they have looked at every other structure, not simply, "This was within the ring I was told to drive, and I liked these three sites." Obviously, two of the sites were identical, since they were rebutting schools. We are talking about a residential community, and I would ask that this board take the time. I would ask that this board continue this matter. I would ask that this board demand a peer review by an independent expert that is answerable only to this board, that will provide a report to this board and for the benefit of this board and for the benefit of the community that it protects. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
You brought up a good point about... that I hadn't thought of about the telephone poles. Is that something that you have seen done?
Yes. As a matter of fact, this is something that is commonplace in other parts of the state. You'll see them in Andover. You will see them in Nantucket. You will see them out in Martha's Vineyard. All of those areas have distributed antenna system requirements. There is even a limited distributed antenna system throughout part of Lowell. In speaking, I did take the liberty of contacting Broadcast Signal Labs prior to my coming here, and in speaking with them, they are familiar with several different facilities that are put up in the area that include distributed antenna arrays. A distributed antenna array is simply a series of effectively short towers that are connected to a single base, rather than tall towers connected to a single base. Rather than having nine antennas at the top of 150-foot pole, you might have one antenna on top of nine poles mounted at 20 feet, spread out over a neighborhood or over a community. It's a much more form-fitting way of filling an existing gap, rather than creating an eyesore for a community. But these are existing systems. I believe Metro PCS has one spread out through or in the process of building out within the city of Lowell, and I know that there is one in Andover near the Academy. I also could refer to certain articles that have been published in the... I apologize while I dig through my file. Certain articles from the Martha's Vineyards Times, talking about the distributed antenna systems which are in place, and showing the minimal impact, if I may. I don't know if you guys have seen these.
Thank you.
I apologize, I didn't bring additional copies, so when you're done, I'll turn those up. Thank you. And as the members of this board may see, when looking at those photographs in the Martha's Vineyard area, you'll see that the cans on these, mounted on the poles, are smaller than the power transformers that are traditionally seen throughout the city. They're less intrusive. As a matter of fact, one wouldn't even know what they are unless they were told. Most people seeing a large cylinder mounted on a utility pole would assume that it has something to do with power, but in this case, it's simply a cellular relay. It's a very simple system. They're commonly in use throughout the country. They're used in many other states besides Massachusetts, and they are common inside of urban areas where you often have masking due to tall buildings. You'll find them throughout Boston. You will find distributed antenna systems throughout any large city where you have these blind spots. Lowell is a growing city, and Lowell should be looking into this, because this is not just one tower. This is the tip of an iceberg. As Lowell continues to grow, as our buildings continue to get higher, we will develop more and more blind spots. We will develop more of these issues. If we have an existing distributed antenna system begun, it can be expanded, and it can fill those spots with minimal intrusion into the communities. Several of them, if you were to do research, would show that these things are sometimes mounted on the side of a building aiming down into a street to cover an avenue or a broad walkway that's otherwise blocked by a taller antenna. I would ask, though, that before this court... or, sir, before this board take any action, that it does require a peer review, that it does develop a substantial record as to the evidence, so that any decision that is made by it is supported by substantial evidence and therefore not likely to be overturned. It's very clear, and the courts in both our federal district and in our neighboring states have all held consistently, that the local zoning may in fact enforce certain height requirements, as long as it doesn't effectively prohibit, and the standard for effective prohibition is that it can't be done another way. Not that it can't be done at a cheaper cost, but that it can't be done.
Thank you. That was helpful. I think if... could address the applicant?
Yeah, I think he brought up a lot of points that, you know, the board does need to consider. I think we were considering already the issue of the peer review, so it just brought up a lot more issues than I think that a peer review will, you know, expose for us and give us a better understanding, so I... that's at least my position. I agree 100% with that. I think that we need a peer review, because to be honest with you, this stuff is sometimes over our heads, as far as what is... it's not over your head, and it's... may not be over Attorney Waika's head, but for the most part, it's over our heads as to exactly what we can do. So, in other towns, in engineering issues, there's peer review, and conservation issues, there's peer review. That stuff is not nearly as complicated as this, so I think that at least for my comfort level, I would want a substantial peer review done to address the issues that were just brought up, so that's... I don't know what the other board members think.
We're more than happy to submit to that.
Okay.
No issues.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly agree with you. I thank Mr. Waika for his importance, his experience was certainly helpful in this matter, because I don't see the due diligence here, that all avenues were explored. I really don't. And I do want to see an independent analysis done, a peer review, if you will, most certainly, because there's got to be another alternative than the solution, and I do support it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
How long do you need for the... we're talking about six weeks?
For...
Well, we have...
For an independent peer review?
Right.
Uh, I mean...
Well, procedurally, you probably aren't aware, or maybe Attorney Waika, you can help with this, but the process for... I don't know if you've dealt with it in the city of Lowell before, because it hasn't come up on this board in the last three years that I've been on it, but to initiate this process of a peer review for this issue, is it the burden of the applicant to go out and do that, or do we have somebody that we would... and you could stand in front of the podium, right? Nobody can see you.
My apologies. Generally, in a peer review, the board would select an independent engineer, someone that they've looked at or someone that they've consulted. What they would do is they would require the applicant to make all data available to this engineer, which would include the coverage map, planned coverage areas, a map of the outgrowing region, showing how the city is going to be covered, because it's not enough to simply say, "I've got a gap and this tower will fill it." You have to say, "And where is my next tower going to go and my next tower after that?" So that the overall analysis can be for the city of Lowell, how will the applicant clearwire provide coverage for the entire city? If it's at a point now where it's covering 90%, then the answer is, you know, how are we going to fill this last 10? If they're at a point now where they're saying, "We've got 50%," then the peer review should look at how the remaining 50 is going to be done, and what... for the purpose of minimal intrusion. So, what that would require is they would provide the coverage maps. They would provide their analysis data as to how they do it, their bandwidth and their current measurements. A peer review would be done. That individual would also come out, take their own measurements within the city and their own echoes. They would then prepare and submit a report. I've seen it done in as little as four weeks, sometimes as little as two if it's expedited. That really is a matter of how quickly the two entities can exchange information and how soon this board can determine who is going to be effectively representing this board. It's not really a peer review if it's done by a person of the applicant's choosing, because they're now an employee of the applicant. They're not an employee of the board.
Right, and when I presented them in other towns for clients, they... it's been six to eight weeks sometimes, and it's been... those are issues with conservation and engineering, and the town always had a list of somebody that you could... that the town would pick as the peer reviewer. So, I guess, you know, we have... I did request some feedback from the law department on this several weeks ago. I haven't received it yet, so maybe they'll have some information as to who we could choose to do that peer review. I just... my question, I guess, is the timeline, and to be on the outside end, I would want to maybe put this on for the first meeting at the beginning of the year, if that gives you enough time, you know?
Again, having spoken with at least one other company prior to coming here, I know that they wouldn't be able to do anything prior to December 7th if they were given all the information this week.
Right, and then it takes a few, and then there's delays, and then there's feedback on both sides.
Right.
And then they have to... the applicant has to respond to them and, you know, to try to pull it together, so, you know, does that seem reasonable to you, the applicant, the first meeting of the year? We don't know when that is, but it's within the first... I would imagine within the first week of January.
Yes, that's fine with us.
Okay. Does any... anybody have any feedback on this?
Mr. Chairman, one other thing I'd like to add is to the petitioner, please explore using telephone poles. As Mr. Attorney Waika stated, as cell towers, that seems like an outstanding alternative, so I ask that you please explore that avenue as well. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to thank, again, Attorney White for his presentation. We had previously discussed, as the chairman mentioned, peer review, and had been made aware of some of the facts. In particular, one of the tools and leverages that we have is to specifically request a peer review at the petitioner's expense, and that was something we were made aware of, and the chairman was looking into it, as he stated. I would also like to thank Attorney White for enlightening us on some additional options, particularly the one that was used out in Martha's Vineyard, which I find quite interesting, and thank you very much. No other comments.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so I think the discussion is that enough time would be the first meeting in January. We don't know when that is, so anybody... if this is continued, anybody wishing to address this board should check in with the zoning officer to see exactly when that meeting's going to be in January, put it on the first... the first meeting we have of the year.
It would be the second Monday of the month, if it helps, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to continue the first scheduled hearing in January of 2010.
Roll call. Continue.
Continue.
Continue. So, that's been continued. I do think we need a motion to appoint a peer review specialist, expert in this matter, just so we have a record of what we're doing and what we're requesting, so we don't have to come back in January and do that, so I think we need a motion to appoint a peer review expert.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint a peer review expert for the purposes of an independent analysis.
Second motion.
And I assume that this is at the cost of the applicant?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, roll call.
Barry. Approve. Landra. Approve. Gary.
Approve.
Approve.
Approve. Okay, that's been approved, so there'll be no further notice requirement. Anybody wishing to address this board and this matter should appear here at the first scheduled meeting in January of 2010. Thanks, everybody, for your time. Okay, the next petition is ZB 200947, special permit in variance request, Aceto Properties LLC, 462 Bridge Street. This is in a neighborhood business district to reestablish the use of property, subject property to its former protected status of 10 residential units and a commercial use on the first floor, according to 4.5.6 and 4.5.7. This matter was continued from the last regularly scheduled hearing. Attorney Sheehy.
Mr. Chairman, Paul Sheehy for Aceto Properties LLC, 462 Bridge Street. We were here several weeks ago, subsequent to that meeting, based upon the comments of the board, and in consultation with the commissioner, we met with the commissioner and tried to satisfy the requirements of the board in a number of areas that they mentioned. I will be very brief here. We have our architect here with us that can go over some of the things that have been worked on to see if they're satisfactory to the board. I don't know if it's within the purview of the zoning ordinance and the authority of the board to approve this at the end of this meeting, even if there are some conditions to be indicated to the commissioner. In other words, so we stop coming back, because my client is getting to the point where the winter is coming. He can't do any work there. He's got a tenant that he's had for several months now, and that tenant is getting very impatient and talking about backing out. We would like to see that project go forward ASAP. There are members of the community of Sennerville who have been here to talk on it. Maybe some of them have left already. However, I hope that we can facilitate this as soon as possible, if it's satisfactory to the board. And with that, I'd like to ask the architect to come up and talk to the board and to the commissioner about what has happened in the interim since we left here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mai Fung at 204 Adams Street in Dorchester, Boston, for the record. I have some material I would like to pass on, so may I approach?
Sure.
Okay, after the meeting last time here, that a week later, or a few days later, we set up the meeting at the Mr. Commissioner's office in the building department. So, we went to the building, and we came up with the letter of the chapter 34 and the scope of work at the first page that I just hand out, and also the second page and the third... the revised site plan that shows and addresses all the issues that last time we was here, we were talking about the parking and the dimension and the trash area and the improvement for the driveway from the parking lot of the rear of the building to the front of the street. See, due to the configuration and the size of the land, that's the best we can come up with for the parking, which is the size will be nine feet wide by 20 feet in length, and it have a 25 feet plus or minus for back out for the reverse and turning around and go back to, you know, go to the Bridge Street. And also, the photo that I used, Photoshop, and tried to create some image that, which is the exit size and the size, let's say, caution, active driveway, and also in the left-hand side of the building, there's a little white dots that I didn't... that's the best I can come up with for the mirror, that if the driver from the parking lot trying to go on the Bridge Street, then it can that if the driver from the parking lot trying to go on the Bridge Street, then he can be able to look at the mirror and see the traffic in the other direction. So that would help. And the additional to that, then we put the plant in the, the plant, plant is in the, the box under the windows on the first floor of the commercial space. And once again, the building is gonna be, remain in the same occupancy load and type, and nothing's gonna be changed. There are 10 apartments on the second and the third floors and two commercial spaces on the first floor.
So this, on the, on the front side, there's also metered parking there as well, right, in front of the building?
I'm sorry?
For parking in front of the building, there's also metered parking?
Is it a meter? Yes, it is a meter. It is.
No, it's not metered, Mr. Chairman.
This is Vincent, I didn't.
It's legal parking, but it's not metered.
Yeah, it's a, it's a 15-minute or 10-minutes expired meeting, that kind of thing.
Okay.
To make traffic go smooth through for the convenience store.
So there's no meters, it just says 15 minutes?
No meter.
So that's, and then people pull up, do the shop and get out?
That's right.
Yes, the neighborhood group just confirmed, Mr. Chairman, so.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, I can see that a lot has been done since the last meeting, which is what we requested, because we just had some questions as to whether you were prepared to deal with the issue of having to sprinkle the building, and obviously you're going to, and that's a significant expense. I know that this is a parcel that the, the planning department is very interested in seeing brought back to its original state. And I understand the timeframe, frame issue right now. I mean, if, if you're gonna do that, right, there was some suggestion about having to tap into that water before you can not open a street. Is that November 15th, or?
November 15.
Usually it is?
I already have a contracted out that this Thursday, working with the commissioner about having the water connection.
Yeah.
For the four-inch pipe, yes. It's definitely November 15.
Then, I mean, I guess you would, if it were approved, you'd do that at your own risk, because the appeal period wouldn't have elapsed, right, Bob? I mean, that's kind of...
That's correct.
Right, so that, but there's, I mean, I haven't heard any opposition to this project at all. It was just kind of, you know, pulling it all together between the last meeting and this meeting, and it appears as though a lot of work was done. We wanted the stamp plan, and we wanted the issues addressed as to delineating the parking in the back, and some flow of traffic, and some, I guess, signage indicating where the egress is in the back, what you're gonna do with your trash, and that's been addressed. And when you said a fence, is that a screened fence?
Yes, correct.
Screened fence, so... Bob, do you see any significant outstanding issues here that would prevent us from approving it tonight, subject to conditions?
Nothing that can't be addressed. One of them would be the, maybe a condition of snow removal off-site, because it is a tight area.
Mm-hmm. Have you considered that, sir?
No, I did, the, like I say, the, the, due to the lot size and the configuration of the lot, and we just want to put as many parks as space as we could. But along the fence in the back, in the, in the rear of the property, as you see, in the front of the dumpster, there's the good chunk of the property. It can be snow storage for the...
How would they get to, if, I'm looking at that, that would be ideal, but how would they get to the dumpster? Or, I mean, I'm looking at this kind of a triangular, half a rectangle, triangle spot to the right. I'm looking, as I look at the plan, to the right of the dumpster?
Okay, I have worked with the waste management company, and I have asked the manager to come out to inspect the property, the land area, to be able to access dumpsters. There's an agreement that they could.
Right, and I guess the only issue is you would have to have, instead of your snow piled up against the fence, you would just have to have it removed.
Right.
It doesn't look like it's gonna be a ton of snow, because most of your spots are all taken.
Also, there was a last issue that was discussed in the last meeting, was the issue of property management. The tenant who leasing the store have expressed interest in managing the property, and I could have that snow removed by a snow blower or something like that.
Right, and they do that, they get the snow right out of there, and they dump it somewhere else, which is probably in a spot like this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And did you address the issue of the parking spot, the public parking, the distance and where that is, and in the...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear you.
I was just, I think the last time, I was fairly satisfied with the, with the parking issue, but we were talking about the actual distance to the spot the last time, if we were gonna, you know, I don't know if that's something we even asked you to look into, but I had it on my notes as something I at least, you know, brought up, so.
The additional parking could be considered in that other lot owned by the city, even though it's not 100% within the span. But how do you decipher that? How can you say you can put a quarter of a car on here?
Right, right. I think if it's, I mean...
The parcel of land is within that footage. I would assume that based upon that and the section of the zoning ordinance, that it cuts down the requirement of 12 parking spaces to six, six that we have there. We are still working to see if we can get something done with the East End Club in terms of either leasing some property or even have egress from our property, which would be a big advantage also.
Okay. And there was the other issue of, that I believe the, even neighborhood association brought up, that you never had an issue with parking there before.
There was, that's kind of parking area as long as I can remember.
Okay.
And this will restore Seneville to what it was for years and years.
Right, I've, I've never had a big issue with the, my issue was with the building and what you would have to do to it, and that's been addressed. I mean, I don't think the parking is gonna present a big problem to anybody. I think the neighborhood association would be aware of that if it was, and I think they represented it wasn't. Vesna?
I actually brought up the issues in the, at the last meeting. Since then, I have, I went back to the place a couple of times, and I have changed my position on that. I do appreciate Mr. Chairman bring that up. I, I'm comfortable with the petitions as is, and also I hear, I see some of the most, if not all, just about all of the issues that raised by this board at the last meeting, and the petitioners have addressed it, and also willing to further with conditions. And the chair, the commissioner just brought up issues of snow removal off the site, and the petitioner quickly responded to it by saying, yes, I'll do that, even, you know, stated the issues of maybe having the, the tenant, the facility managers who would do those, meaning remove the snow from the site, should there be any issues there. So with all that, Mr. Chairman, I, like you, I changed my position with regard to parking. I will go along with the vote, the wish of the board. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Bill, anything?
So as far as the parking goes, is the parking, I think I asked this before, is that for the residents only, or is it shared parking with even customers?
It's residential only.
Residents only. Will there be signs that indicate that?
Yes.
Okay.
And we can put that as a condition, you know?
Okay.
I think we already have that as a condition.
Good, good.
Signs to be put there.
Yep.
Yes, I also have it in the lease agreement that, you know, just for residents, yes.
And I had a question on the snow removal, but the commissioner brought that up, so I was glad to hear that. Fire department, Bob, have they been over there, or is that something that'll be conditional when you, when they go up for the permit? Has the fire department been through there, or are there any concerns?
I don't believe they have yet. Excuse me, but they, I have sat with the architect and the owner, and we reviewed all these items, you know, primarily the driveway, the parking, dumpster, property management, and compliance and safety issues, and they were forthcoming with telling me that they intended to sprinkle that building, period. They're anxious to get at least it stubbed in from the street, so that at any point in time over the next several months, if they decide to connect, the connection's already there. There are some other issues that'll be taken care of in the plan review process, but he's fully aware of what needs to be done.
Well, the, and I know it's pre-existing, but the width of the driveway that currently exists, is that...
My primary concern...
Would be adequate for, you know, trash removal trucks getting in there, or fire equipment getting in there?
I'm less concerned about fire equipment. They may be reluctant to go in there with a full-size truck. They may get trapped.
Okay.
But his response tonight, the owner's response with regards to bringing in a professional company, they've, according to him, they've observed the site, and they can get in there. And I think with the appropriate size dumpster or canister, which may have to be emptied maybe a little more frequently if it's a smaller one, but according to him, the dumpster company has reviewed the site, and they can get a truck in there.
Yeah, well, I think for that number of units, they would have to have that type of service, correct?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Jack, anything?
Three, Mr. Chairman. Being as familiar as I am with the area, and in particular the history of Fruens, a couple of things I'll say. First, in the years when, when that location flourished, parking was never an issue. I think a couple of the concerns that I had about access from behind the building have been addressed. I think the mirror's a great idea. I think the sensor light is a great idea. The fire department issue, is there, that's a fenced area adjacent to the parking, parking lot of the East End Club, correct?
Yes.
So that, so, Bob, is, is there emergency access from that side of the building with the fencing there?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay. All that being said, I, that would be the, the one concern. I don't know if there's a gate, a gated, something that can be done to allow access from the backside of the building, if there is problems with a, a full-sided vehicle, full-sized fire vehicle getting into the alleyways. Is there something that can be done for the rear, from the rear of the building where that fencing is, that would allow that access through the parking lot of the East End Club? If that's something that can be addressed. I think this is a great petition for the neighborhood. I'm sure the petitioner is aware, everyone who lived in the area was, that I believe that fire was electrical in nature caused by the, the old sign that was above Fruens Store, and I'm sure the petitioner is aware of that, and those issues have been addressed as well. All that being said, the only point of interest I would have is if something could be done, as much for the safety of the petitioner, as obviously the neighborhood, would be, is there some way feasibly that a, a emergency vehicle can enter from that backside if that fencing were to offer some sort of gate and access into the parking lot?
That's an option that I would recommend the, I'd sit down with the fire, fire protection and get some feedback from them, and if it's feasible to do, do something like that.
I think it obviously would certainly be in the best interest of the petitioner if that's something that can be worked out.
I agree.
Thank you.
Hey, Vesna?
I'm also.
Okay, Cory?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. I definitely want to commend the petitioner. You've done an outstanding job. You did your, certainly did your due diligence here on your plan revisions. You addressed the safety issues, the dumpster, the snow removal. To me, as we stated two weeks ago, parking was not a big concern of mine. The safety issues, however, were. I mean, this is what, it's a 10-unit building for a number of years, and it thrived without, with the number of parking spaces that you have. I think the tenants in that building rely heavily on public transportation, which is right on the street, and the variety store, you know, will suit the neighborhood, pedestrian, on foot. So I think you're all set in that regard. So one question I would like to ask, on your rendition of the building, is that a new vinyl siding, or is that the old?
The addition, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the rendition of the, the picture of the building here?
There's no addition to the building.
I think that's existing, isn't it?
It's existing, okay, all right. Well, it looks good, okay. I don't know if that was, but it looks great, whatever it is, and...
This is Photoshop. But may I ask something? After the meeting last time, that we looked into the, you know, you guys, the board...
So you have to speak from, nobody can hear you?
Okay, the board concerned about the safety issue of the driveway, we have looked into the easement of the left, the right-hand side of the property, see if there was an easement, and the car can be able to access from the side street, but unfortunately not. You know, we look into it.
Okay, well, I definitely support all the changes you made. I do support the petition. And I ask that you keep pursuing your alternative for the, for parking off the East End Club, and that second egress would be great, too, if you can, able to achieve that. I know you're gonna work with the commissioner closely, with the fire department, and I'd like to think we have the neighborhood groups' blessings. I, I think they're on board, the impression, the impression I get. And I'm anxious to see this building getting up and running, and I think the city is, and I know you are. So I do support this petition. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. They did come back with the plan we asked for, for the parking and the dumpster. It is a building that needs to be put back on the rules, that's for sure, over there in that neighborhood, needs to be fixed up. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody here wish to speak in favor of this petition, in favor?
Hi, I'm Pat Hunt. I'm the president of the Seneville Neighborhood Action Group, and I am here to speak in favor of the project. We're really pleased to finally see this building up and going and progress down in that area. It's been a long time looking at that building after the fire and nothing being done about it in all these years. We appreciate the work that these gentlemen have done. They have been very gracious, and they've been listening to the neighborhood group. We like the idea that they're gonna have a management group that will ensure that the property is taken care of and that it's kept clean out in front, and they ensured us that there would be some nice flowers out there, which does decorate the neighborhood a bit. And it kind of falls in with the manager's impact initiative to revitalize the Bridge Street area, so we're really pleased with it. We're not worried about the parking. It's, it's, I mean, it's been an existing area. It's always had minimal parking, and if people want to go shopping there, they usually park down the street. There's a, there's a larger lot down the street. They'll park there or park anywhere for 10 minutes or whatever and do what they have to do and leave. So we think it's gonna be a win-win situation for the neighborhood, and we're really pleased. We appreciate the board, you know, for giving us the time to speak, and it's getting late, and I'm waiting for my, there's a trilogy that starts tonight. It starts at 10:00, so I'm ready to go.
Thanks for your input.
Yes, I think.
Anybody else wish to speak in favor?
Somebody took your pen. My name is Ian Murray Page. I live at 26 Fremont Street in Lowell, and I sit on the board of the Seneville Neighborhood Action Group. As I said the last time we were here, we are very pleased with this project. We appreciate all the work these two gentlemen did. These are not gentlemen that are citizens of Lowell. They're gonna be, and we're glad that they're coming over the river to Seneville. So we are very pleased. We know they've worked hard. And as far as parking, which is our pet peeve in Seneville, in this situation, we realize those six parking spots are gonna work for that particular situation. Small apartments, not gonna be large families. They're not gonna have 20 over for Thanksgiving. It's gonna work. As far as the business, you pull up front, you park, you're in and out in 15 minutes, and you're gone. There are two city-owned parking lots within walking distance of less than a block from the building, so it will work for them. We're very happy, and we're hoping they're looking at other properties in Seneville, too. We appreciate all the work you did, and if I never ever hear the word "while" as the antenna for the rest of my life, I'll be happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak in favor? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Roman, 58 Oak Street. As I stated at the last meeting, this fits in with the Seneville Master Plan, which was done about four years ago, and it will also help the tax base of the city. I urge that the board approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? In hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition to this petition? In hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed.
Chairman, do we, before I make a motion, do we have any conditions the board members would like to apply?
I think the one condition we discussed is the snow removal and residential sign, residential parking-only sign. I think those are the only two conditions we have. And I assume the applicant's gonna meet everything else with the building department, Bob? That's, everything else has to go through your office, so there's no point in us putting any kind of conditions on that. That's just...
That's correct.
Has to go through that process, okay. And the other one is a, we talked about a residential-only parking sign. Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, with the following conditions: that the rear, the six parking spaces in the rear, that signs be applied that state residential parking only in the rear of the building. Condition number two is that snow was to be removed from the property. Now, Mr. Chairman, what kind of guideline should we use there? from the property. Now, Mr. Chairman, what kind of guideline should we use there? I mean, if it's minimal snow?
I think if we just say, "snow removal from the property," that's normally the condition we put on, and I think that that does cover the snow being removed from the property. In other words, they can't just, they have to take it out. It's, I don't think we need to put any additional language in.
No, I think, I think what that says is that it's any snow that interferes with the normal operations back there. When it reaches that extent, there's the threshold in which it has to be removed.
And the second condition will be any snow on the premises that obstructs additional parking, or the parking be removed from the property.
Second.
Okay, Stephanie, need a roll call?
Approve with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Approve with condition.
Okay, sir, you've been unanimously approved by this board with the two conditions. Attorney Sheehy, if you can come up and just sign the bottom of this plan and hand to Stephanie, and good luck with your project, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you, the board.
The, we have meetings, we have minutes to approve from June 22nd, July 22nd, August 10th, August 24th, and September 8th. We're getting behind on these, but I haven't had a chance to review all these, so I'm just gonna suggest we put it off for one more date, and then I'll, I'll take the time to go over all of them.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to table the approval till November 23rd.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any other business, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, yes, we have a correspondence here regarding 28 North Street. I don't know...
I think that's, the issue's been resolved prior to the meeting, so I think they're gonna have to bring that up.
Okay.
So...
With that being said, I'll make a motion with adjourned.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye, sir.
All right, meeting adjourned.